All right, it's 6:01. I'm gonna re-adjourn from closed session. And so we can get this, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Lowenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Horvath.
Here.
Councilmember Obaji.
Here.
Councilmember MD.
Here.
Mayor Brad Absent and Mayor Potem Nierenheim.
Here. Okay, do we have anything to report from closed session?
Not this evening.
Perfect, all right. So reconvening to open session, can we get, or adjourning to a regular, excuse me, adjourning to a regular meeting? Do we, can we get a call to order at 6:02? And can we get a roll call vote, please, order?
Councilmember Lowenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Horvath.
Here.
Councilmember Obaji.
Here.
Councilmember MD.
Here.
Mayor Brad Absent and Mayor Potem Nierenheim.
Here, okay. We're gonna do a salute to flag and then a moment of silence directly thereafter. On three, one, two, three.
Congratulations to the flag, the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have no presentations or big checks to get from the state of California. We have no proclamations, so we're just gonna do regular announcements from council members. Councilmember Lowenstein.
Yeah, two things. The first thing is, the District Two Community Meeting will be tomorrow evening, 6:00 to 7:30 on Zoom. And you can look for a link on the District Two webpage under City Council. The second thing is, I'd like to read an announcement, and that is, I'm proud and very honored to be representative of the residents of District Two. And I realize that some of the phrasing that I used recently on a TV interview didn't sit well with some members of the community. And I've listened and I've reflected a lot over the last few days. And I've come to the conclusion that I must and will do better for all of you and give greater care to my words. So please know that I meant no harm in my words, and I sincerely apologize to anybody I offended. And let me be clear that this town is, this great and special town is always open and welcome to everyone. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Horvath.
District Three Community Meeting is this Saturday morning from 9:30 to 11:00. My special guest will be Chief Butler from the Fire Department, and it'll be on Zoom.
Councilmember Obaji.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. We'll have my District Four Community Meeting open to everybody tomorrow on Zoom as well, 6:30 PM. You can get the link on my councilmember page. Hope everybody had a happy Veterans Day. It was a moving experience, actually all five councilmembers present. It was an honor to be joined by all my fellow councilmembers and the mayor at Veterans Park to observe the ceremony, which is very touching. And, you know, well, one of the speakers, I think the acclaimed, what do they call that? The head of the Elks Lodge?
Exalted ruler.
Exalted ruler of the Elks Lodge talked about how this was a time, and Veterans Day was a time, to really reflect on what unites us all, especially post-election, post-special election here in Redondo Beach and national election. And I am proud to say, I am proud to be a representative in this great city of Redondo Beach, where more so than many other communities around, especially across the United States, we welcome a diversity of people to serve on our commissions, to be part of our government, to our seaside lagoon, our waterfront, our pier, our international boardwalk. And we'll continue to be a richer place by welcoming people here. And we just were working our inclusionary rent, inclusionary housing ordinance last week. And this week, I'm proud to be, later on in our meeting, I'll make a referral staff relative to protecting renters in our city, which has not been done before in a serious manner, to again, continue to welcome everybody of all types, all classes, all nationalities, colors, genders, sexual orientations to our great city. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember MD.
So, yes, it was a great event, and it was very touching to see Irv Massey and get his awards for all the work he's done with the Veterans Memorial. And that was, that was truly a touching ceremony. Wanted to wish everybody Happy Thanksgiving. This is our last meeting until past Thanksgiving. There's, just so you know, there's no street sweeping on Thursdays or Fridays, so don't panic if everybody's over. You don't have to move for street sweeping. And also, it's, right after that is gonna be Christmas, so the toy drive is happening at the three fire stations. So make sure you go by with an unwrapped toy, sport equipment, no stuffed animals, please. So please, I know this is a very generous community, and I do hope you'll consider donating a toy to one of the fire stations. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Fantastic. So I had my community meeting, in-person community meeting, this last Saturday at Alta Vista, a good little crowd showing up. I will not be doing an online community meeting this month, too many scheduling conflicts, too much going on, so won't be doing that. I would like to thank our Fire Department for saving the day on their flag down at Veterans, Veterans Park for Veterans Day. It was an absolutely gorgeous and beautiful afternoon. You know, Public Works, you guys did a fantastic job, Community Services, fantastic job getting the chairs down there. Police Department, our chief looked fantastic in his hat. He kept saying it was just his hat and sunglasses, but something else was different. We had Supervisor Holly Mitchell came down, Senator Ben Allen came down, Water Board Director Scott Houston came down. It was a really, really full event, really, really emotional, like you said. We had some people coming there for the last time, so that was really cool. And it is a lot, that event really is a good quality reflection. And how they put it together with all the navies and sailors and Space Force is really, really cool. So it's a real honor to be a part of that. Last time, I forgot to mention that our Public Works has sandbags. So we had a big rain that came through last time, last week. If we have some more rains coming up, this is important for people with sump pumps, try those sump pumps out. Sandbags, we have sandbags for people. I know the Riviera Village, you guys have issues with some of the drainage, and some of the residents on hills have issues with drainage. So make sure you guys know that we have those available for you. So that's it for now. Moving forward, approval order agenda, I would like to move, personally, I'd like to move item P1 and P2 to after consent calendar from the back of the calendar, so we don't do it at the end.
Second thing, if that's a motion.
That's a motion, I'll take that as a second, thank you very much. Anyone else have any comments or questions on that?
Wait, is that, is that, I'm sorry.
Moving items P1 and P2 after the consent calendar, after each item.
Before non-agenda items.
Before non-agenda.
Before non-agenda items? It was just, some people just come down for non-agenda, can we put non-agenda first? Before that? Just keep, just because a lot of people just come down for non-agenda and then leave.
Yeah, I'd like to keep it, P1 and P2 is very important. They'll go fast, I think it's important that we have those items.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Oh, you're a second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. There we go, so onwards to no agency recesses. Do we have any blue folders? I believe we do three items, right?
Right, so we have one for N1, which is related to the new website provider, public comment, I mean communications. N3 regarding Beach Cities Health District, healthily living campus project, public communications. And then N5 related to the ballot measures related to amending the charter, ballot language, some recommendations, or some public communications. And that's it.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
All right, so can we get a motion to move that to, motion to move the blue folder items to the record?
Yes, I'll make that motion, so move it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Consent calendar, so we have tonight 16 items on the consent calendar. We're gonna approve them all as is unless someone decides to pull one of these items on the council. If anyone wants to come down and speak to any of the items, we'll allow you that time as well. So Councilmember Lowenstein.
No, thank you.
Councilmember Horvath.
No, thank you.
Councilmember Obaji.
No, thank you.
Councilmember MD.
No, thank you.
Okay. So we are gonna approve all these one fall swoop. Is there anyone with orange cards or anyone in person that wants to come down and speak to the consent calendar items? Any Zoom items?
We have no Zoom items, no ecomments to say how many, so there's none.
Wow, moving along, all right. Is there a motion to approve all the consent calendar items?
Are there ecomments?
Some of.
Are there?
No, so there was no ecomments.
You said no.
To mention how many were, there were, there's none.
Perfect.
Some of, H1 through H16.
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, pass unanimously, fantastic.
There's plenty, there's a lot of resolutions, so just, just so you know. N5, adopt by title-only resolution number CC-2211-095, a resolution of the City Council of Redondo Beach, California, leasing certain properties to St. Waffair Emerson Preschool, Inc. H8, adopt by title-only resolution number CC-2211-096, a resolution, City Council of Redondo Beach, California, authorizing the middle of the funding request certification to the Department of Resources, Recycling and Recovery, CalRecycle, for payment programs and related authorizations. H10, adopt by title-only ordinance number 0-3247-22, an ordinance of the City Council of Redondo Beach, California, adopting by reference in 2022 additions of the California Building Code, California Residential Code, California Electrical Code, California Plumbing Code, California Medical Code, California Fire Code, California Existing Building Code, California Green Building Standards Code, California Energy Code, California Administration Code, California Historical Building Code, California Referenced Standards Code, 2021 International Property Maintenance Code, Uniform Swimming Pool Spa and Hot Tub Code, 2006 and 1997 Uniform Housing Code, together with certain deletions, additions, and amendments to Title III, V, and IX of the Redondo Beach Municipal Code. H11, adopt by title-only resolution number CC-2211-097, a resolution, City Council of Redondo Beach, California, leasing certain properties to Unagi, Inc. H12, adopt by title-only resolution CC-2211-098, a resolution, City Council of Redondo Beach, California, leasing certain properties to Doing It With Love, Inc., DBA, Trade Wins and Pineapple Alley, a California corporation. H13, adopt by title-only resolution number CC-2211-102, a resolution, City Council of Redondo Beach, California, leasing certain properties to El Baja Cafe Chef LLC. H15, adopt by title-only resolution number CC-2211-099, a resolution, City Council of Redondo Beach, California, approving the State of California Department Alcohol Beverage Control ABC OTS Grant Agreement between the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control and the City of Redondo Beach, and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Adopt by four-fifths vote and by title only, resolution number CC-2211-100, a resolution, City Council of Redondo Beach, California, authorizing a fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget modification to appropriate 26,000 in grant funds from the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control through the State Office of Traffic Safety to the Intergovernmental Government Funds, the last one, H16, adopt by title-only resolution number CC-2211-101, a resolution, City Council of Redondo Beach, California, amending part-time employment policy and pay plan by incorporating state mandate increases to minimum wage effective January 1st, 2023 for existing part-time positions' pay rates in various departments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, which brings us to item P1. Councilmember Lowenstein, I'll let you introduce this.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Nierenheim. I actually brought this up at our last meeting. There were some vile and disgusting flyers that were left up in part of our city. I'm not gonna repeat what they were said, but they were hate speech, basically. And I'm hoping, as a council, we can unanimously pass this resolution condemning hate speech in our community. There's no room for it in our town. Everyone is always welcome in this town, and I hope that we can send a strong message to the people out there or the person out there, because this is the second time it's happened in the last year. We send a strong message that it's not welcome in our community, and I'm hoping that we pass this resolution unanimously.
Okay, Councilmember Obaji, oh, actually, hold on, let's do the reading, what else do you have to say? Elizabeth?
We were just bringing this back as we referred to stand, but if you have questions, we'll be able to.
Fantastic, Councilmember Obaji.
Sure, just wanna say, let's not let one bad apple spoil them all. This is not a reflection, what occurred is not a reflection of our community at all. And the person, this individual probably, who keeps doing it is gonna keep doing it. It's difficult to find a person like that, but all we can do is just continue to express our disagreement, disgust with it, and continue to do our trick-or-treating and having fun and decorating our neighborhoods and welcoming everybody to them. That's it.
And I'll just say that, you know, we should need, we need to have a zero tolerance policy against, against this kind of happening in our communities. It is not reflective of us at all, and when it gets on to newspapers, it looks bad. So for us to be able to take a stand on this, I don't think we did a stand last year on this, which is why it's so important we do this this year. And I know it came right around October, Halloween, that we need to be inclusive and provide safe space for everyone to come to. So is there any orange cards from the members of the public? Thank you. All right, first one is Wayne Craig.
You created this horrific flyer, are guilty of a hate crime, and they should be prosecuted accordingly. The TV news report stated that sadly, this is the second year in a row a flyer like this is posted in the same area, which is disgusting. I also believe they said it might have been exactly the same flyer as the one printed the year prior, and I believe both of these were found actually by the same person. I had a couple of questions, I just wanted to ask, maybe the chief can answer, but the TV report didn't mention if a police report was filed on this. And the reason I mention that, because I think in order to prosecute as a hate crime, that's one of the first steps that has to be done, so we can find out who did this and end this once and for all. And if our chief can confirm this, if an incident was filed on this one, or even on the one last year, I'm not sure, because the TV report didn't indicate if one was done. And while this makes it a little weird, I'm not sure if there was, it sounds like last year there was a bunch of flyers out there, and as many were done this time, but the reason I ask is that there's a lot of people in our city who have Ring Doorbell cameras. And if so, maybe one of these suspects were caught on a Ring Doorbell, and we could follow up who really are. So if anyone in the neighborhood hasn't deleted their video yet, I ask them to please go through, look through, see if they can find someone, and if so, they could share it with law enforcement. And I can say from personal experience with cameras on my block, and I was actually catching a prowler who was trying to break into my house and was walking around, prowling around some cars. And because of the Ring camera, I was able to share that with my neighbors, and we actually were able to identify a suspect and call the police out, and they scared him away. So I'm just putting all that out there, hopefully that we can catch this person and end this. This is terrible, and it's a bad reflection on our city, which is inclusive, but we invite everyone here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, Councilmember MD.
I just wanted to make sure, we're not reading out ecomments, but I want to make sure that everybody takes a moment to read some of the ecomments that were said, they're very poignant, and, and like they said, to discourage, if you're part of a hate page on any of the social medias, that you possibly unlike those pages, so that that way, your change of perpetuating love versus hate will start with something like that. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. And, you know, in District One, last couple, two years ago, we had a Black Lives Matter poster that was defaced, and we took that seriously, we had a full investigation on that, and we ended up catching the person who did the facing. And it's important that people know that we do take action, it's not a joke, it's very serious for us. So, all right, are there any motions on the floor for this item?
Second.
All right. Any other? Thank you. Okay, and there any, yeah, there's four ecomments you said, somebody said? Very good. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go, perfect, thank you. I'll be signing that personally, myself. All right, this next item is item P2. I brought this onto the agenda last week, actually. I saw Beverly Hills pass this, actually originally came to me through ICAA, Independent Cities Association, I saw that Beverly Hills passed this. They took a very strong stance, they took one a little bit further in terms of going into the international politics and aspect of it. And there was this resolution is asking this California Legislature to support the gender equality movement by the brave women and men of Iran. And, you know, we take a lot of our things that we have fought for over the years, well, generations for granted here. And in other countries, they, people can barely even go outside. And when I first found out about this, you know, there was a 22-year-old lady who was driving, Masha Amini, and the Islamic Republican morality police of Iran, basically, just make it short, in custody, in custody when they arrested her. She, they, she died, basically murdered her. And I think we need to take a strong stance and let people know what's going on in these countries, because a lot of our news nowadays, especially in here in the United States, is focused in on what's happening here. And this was during the election cycle, when it was really big, the election cycle. And I feel it very important that we follow Beverly Hills and City Carson, actually. And in fact, most of this resolution tonight is bottled off of the City of Carson. And I, I can't strain, stress enough the level of importance that we have as residents and elected leaders to show what's happening in other places and show that our support to help things move forward, like how nicely we have them here, with our rights, our ability to express ourselves, gender equality. I think it's imperative, really, that we move forward with that, and, you know, it makes a better world. So are there any members of the public that want to come down and speak to this item? Are there any agenda Zoom comments?
I have one comment, and it supports it.
Yeah, and the comment basically talks about regime change in, even necessarily regime change in Iran. I think it's important that we, again, we've been through this with other countries, you know, this is something that's very, very important as us, what we, what we take for granted. Councilmember Obaji.
Yeah, one of my constituents, Iranian American, posted a clip from Chicago's news where folks out there lined up white flags leading to the runway at one of the airports there, and there was one white flag for every detainee or person killed in Iran in response to the protests. And it's so people who are flying in can see the words "Free Iran." And I was particularly moved by that, because it shows kind of what a big message these tiny little things can send. And I think that if we as American communities continue to send this message, it'll help strengthen the folks over there who are, who are standing up for themselves in acts that we kind of take for granted, that we can come up and speak freely, so.
And there was a, there was a parade, a protest of cars coming on PCH, about two weekends ago, I think it was? So that, those actions really help out letting people know what's going on. All right, I'll make a motion to approve item P2.
Second.
Oh, wait a minute, we have a Zoom.
Okay.
Candace Nefesi.
Good evening, Mayor Potem and City Council, this is Candace Nefesi. I live in District Three, and I just want to say I have many Iranian family members. I am not of Iranian descent, but my husband is Iranian, and I want to say, on behalf of the beach community, Iranian community, we thank you for your efforts to stand up against this. It's making quite a spill into our community, and so we appreciate the leaders that take a step in the right direction in showing and denouncing what's wrong. Thank you so much.
Okay, that concludes the Zoom.
Okay, motion on the floor to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Okay, thank you. All right, this next thing, we are going to non-agenda items. And it is 627. We'll say 628. Thank you. Miss Nefesi, Miss Nefesi. There you go.
I should have got this.
There you go with your kids.
Okay, there you go.
There you go.
Sorry.
Busy mom. All right, so we'll say 628. It's, we got 30 minutes for non-agenda items. Everyone gets three minutes. We cannot respond to whatever people have to say. We can ask for certain clarification on some of these items. But you only get once to come down here, talk about it, whatever you'd like. Please limit them to things that are not on the agenda. We will stop you if it's on the agenda. And that's it. So first, first we'll do orange cards, then we'll do in-person, then we'll do Zoom. So Wayne Craig, you are number one, and after that, Ross Yoznow, you are number two.
One, I have the sad news tonight to report to the community that after a five-month battle with glioblastoma, brain cancer, my friend Bruce Ellis passed away last week on November 8. For those who knew Bruce, he was a fighter and a champion for residents in Redondo Beach. He was known for his straight talk and not holding back on important facts that Redondo residents needed to know. Bruce lived in District Four for almost 20 years and even ran for City Council in 2009. After moving to Torrance, he still cared a lot about Redondo Beach and often weighed in on issues that impacted his residents. Bruce was a good man, interested in making the city, and interested in making the city a better place for all Redondo residents. There will be a memorial service for Bruce at St. James Church on Vincent Street at 2:00 PM on December 8th for friends who want to share his memory with his family. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and Mr. C Manager, if we can close the memorial on December 6th. I said something like Rene already. Thank you. All right, Ross, and then after that, we've got Marcus Goodie, Goodlow.
Hi, Ross Yoznow, Redondo Beach, District Two. For whatever reason, it seemed like a good night to talk about reasonable growth versus silly things. I want to talk about myself personally as someone who's not against building things. One, I was chairman of the Library Commission for three years when we built this place, fought the city manager at the time and his minions, no offense to the current city manager, to get things built in this library that we wanted built, not some garbage. Two, out of that came the Library Foundation. I was one of the four original founding members of that. Some of you remember Ron Cordy was the president. Mary Ann Guthrie was the vice president, and I was the founding secretary. Three, after watching for 20 years trying to do something with the Red Onion, I thought it was time to do something. And personally, I voted for the Shade Hotel, and we needed my vote. That thing was really pretty closed. And four, recently, I guess a couple of years ago, when, after watching the city and the school board try to do something with the property at Nob Hill and PCH, I thought, okay, I'm voting for that too, and that seemed like a good idea. And I look at these four projects, and personally, I have no regrets. I think they were all pretty good ideas, one way or the other. But then a few years ago, the AES plant wanted to put up 600 condos with no mitigation for schools, for traffic, for sewage. And I was privileged to join a group called R4, Redondo Residents for Responsible Revitalization, and with some really great people, and I was privileged to be a small part in stopping that. And a couple of years later, when CenterCal came in with these insane ideas, including 17 theaters down there, when it was obvious people weren't going to the theaters before COVID, I was also happy to be a small part of that. Spoke here a couple of times about what a lousy idea the theater was. So in conclusion, I am for building things that make sense. But I am not for building things that make no sense at all. And I just hope you all feel the same way. And for some reason or other, I may have something to say about that later. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Goodie, and then after that, Holly Osborne.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council. Less than 72 hours ago, I was bragging to a dear friend of mine who lives in Atlanta, Georgia, about the benefits of living in the South Bay and more specifically, Redondo Beach. In advancing my argument, I stated, look, despite the high taxes and occasional few raindrops and light traffic, we have the beaches, great weather, and more. The last refrain and more was a nod to my understanding that no city is perfect. And that includes Redondo Beach. And talking with my friend the last 12 hours never has the aforementioned rang so true. To think our city is perfect would be naive. Like other municipalities, we have crime, we have tensions between issues of environmental groups and business leaders over expansion and development. But we are not talking about what's perfect. This is a discussion about what is acceptable and unacceptable, what is honorable and what is decent and what is respectful. The beauty of Redondo Beach is not just in its topography, but the people who call it home. And that is why the comments made by our elected officials who serve and have served on this body, on the city council, including the mayor, are so profoundly disturbing. In the last 24 hours, and then in fact, the last few hours, I visited with councilmember Todd and our mayor, and I made it abundantly clear that the statements in the interview on television and in exchange of emails, regardless of how long those emails have been, are unacceptable. They are unacceptable. We can't have public, public policy debates about growth and about expansion, about the challenges that may come from such, but we cannot lead out of fear, we cannot lead out of classism, racism, or elitism. Councilmember Lowenstein and our mayor have taken responsibility for their words. And for that, I think that's a good first step. Over the last few years in our nation and the local cities, we've seen an uptick in racial strife, hate crimes, and continued economic divide. Such realities have come for a host of reasons. But to be clear, what we need is we need our elected officials to model what is seen in our everyday lives of the citizens they serve. Things like generosity, compassion, empathy, fairness, respect, human decency, and love. To our elected officials, we must do better, we must be better, we must demand better from those of you, as well as the people who make up this great city. Are you the back to balance of my time?
Thank you, sir. All right, Holly Osborne. After that, anyone else wants to come down and speak?
He's such a good speaker. God, every time. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, and City Council members. This is Dr. Osborne from District Five. I want to talk about RENA, Required Housing Needs Assessment. And I emailed you my remarks with some diagrams. It would help you understand my remarks better if you have that email open. As you know, all cities received exceptionally high RENA's for the six cycles, RENA cycle. In fact, they were so high that certain legislators requested that an audit be performed of the HCD method for coming up with the RENA allocations to the various regions, the SCAG, the ABAG, and so forth. And this effort was spearheaded by Senator Glazer. And the audit was performed and, and a letter was received in March about the results of it. And they really criticized the HCD methods, but they didn't come up with new numbers. So I wrote a letter to Senator Glazer in March 23rd of 2022, and that's part of what I sent you. So then the reason for this motivation of why we thought the numbers were not correct was another institute, the Embarcadero Institute, did their own numbers and came up with much less numbers. And you've got figure one here, okay? And thus, these are four main regions. SCAG is the first one. That's what we're part of. HCD came up with 1.34 million, and Embarcadero came up with 651,000. If you add up all the tall numbers and the short numbers, the difference is over 900,000. So we have requested that the audit people come up with real numbers. Now, the audit report, here's the same figure. Where did they concentrate? Where there was the least difference? Is that where you would perform an audit? When you're trying to find 900,000, you go to the least difference? We really want to get the cities activated and motivated to get real numbers. And so I want to just read a sentence from the state auditor about their RENA work, the HCDs. Overall, this is a quote, "Our audit determined that HCD does not ensure that its needs assessment are accurate and adequately supported." So anyway, I sent you links and so forth. And then, because I'm all about numbers, I got an unlocked version of the, of the algorithm. And instead of 1.34 million in, and instead of 651, I went right to the middle, which is about 1 million. It's a round number, and it's almost exactly in the middle. So if we had done that for 1 million, our RENA would have been about 1690 instead of about 2490. Three, two, one, done.
Thank you, Dr. Osborne.
So anyway, I need you guys to encourage your other COG members to get your cities to take this on, okay? And here's all your cheats, cheats you need to know, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have it here, your email open. All right, first up.
Good evening, Pam Kumbar. It's nice to see everybody again after so long. Hope everybody's healthy. I'm here to speak on the Los Angeles Times article about the crude emails revealing a nasty side of California Beach City Crusade to halt growth. I understand that this gentleman had a meeting with Councilman Lowenstein and Mayor Brand. So I will not focus on that part of it. But this article is obviously out of context, which we all know is common in journalism. I know for a fact, because I'm from Torrance, by the way, that this is an inclusionary city. No pun intended, but not being from the city, I do live and spend the greater portion of my life and time and money here. It's places like this that are visited by people all across Los Angeles. Not wanting overdevelopment, traffic and overcrowding, with no way to pay for the increased burdens on the police, schools, fire, and infrastructure is a good thing for everyone. Leo bought Parkland. This is what the voters wanted. Slow growth development is not biased, it's not racist, it's not elitist. Redondo Beach, we all know now, it's very well-known, is one of the most dense cities on the coastline. And I think I've been part of some of the movements, helping with the Bristol Farms Legato Project, getting it from 200, over two, what, two, over 200 units or 180 units down to like 115. I live right down the street. That's what got me all fired up and decided to become an advocate and activist in helping with this slow growth, living so close to this development. And I did participate in helping with Measure C. I just kept seeing the vision that this, that it would have become a Club Med, you know, all-inclusive, excluding all of us that live and enjoy the pier and the harbor as it is today. With that, I'm going to leave you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next up, anyone else want to come down and speak? Are there any Zoom commenters?
Okay, if anybody in Zoom would like to raise their hand to speak, otherwise we have how many ecomments? We have one ecomment, or, excuse me, two, three. Three comments for this section. No Zoom comments.
Okay. Going once for in-person, going twice for in-person. Going, going, and we're done. Okay. So first item on the agenda, item N1, discussion and possible action regarding selection of a new website provider. Let me tell you, I couldn't be any more excited about this item. When I got here, I was excited to get a new website in 2017. Are you going to include anybody to the history of our website, where it came from?
We're going to talk about the future of our website and how we have spent quite a bit of time and we are very grateful for. We're going to talk a little bit more specifically about that, of the work of our community subcommittee that really assisted in our effort. And Luke will go through each of those individuals. But we had a mayoral council mayor subcommittee that helped us with this as well. And it's been a very deliberate and very methodical process. And we're very pleased with our recommendation tonight. We hope you all agree with where we're heading. As I've said before, our website is long overdue for upgrades. I think we all know that. That's no secret. It's just been about identifying the right vendor to help support our metamorphosis. And this really, for us, is the basis of not just a more integrated and more user-friendly, more online portal and module-friendly website. But it's also really the tool and the basis for us to launch a new communication strategy, a more comprehensive and integrated communications plan, working with our new team. So we're very much looking forward to the implementation of our new website platform and all of the things that it will ultimately allow us to do as we communicate with our residents. So with that, I'll turn it over to Luke, and I'll reaffirm some of his thank yous at the very end.
Awesome. Mayor Pro Tem, Council, thank you very much. Eleanor, do you mind throwing that presentation up? All right, so as Mike mentioned, just going to give you a quick little overview. So this was a strategic planning objective to rebuild or launch a new city website. And so that was the mandate that came to us. And we brought a preliminary discussion, MD, on May 3rd to see what direction we wanted to go. And at that time, you established the council subcommittee with the Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Lowenstein serving on that, as well as a community working group, and I will identify those folks on the next slide. But basically, at that point, you validated our approach of doing, putting out a request for information, and then engaging vendors from there. And so before we get in, I would really like to say a big thanks to all four members of the community working group that was established. All of them dedicated an immense amount of time and a lot of expertise to this process. Sheila Lamb, who is a retired clinical social worker, really served as the voice of the resident and somebody that has frequently come in here and sort of challenged us to improve. And I think she brought that, that motivation to bear on this process. Dr. Marco Papa is on the USC faculty for computer science and was a project manager for the LA Superior Court. So has a great, great technical background and expertise sort of generally in the IT space and specifically with websites and delivery. Bevesh Uparaya, he is a product, technical product manager at Warner Brothers and Disney. So has been working to integrate those platforms, so real heavy hitter in content, streaming, delivery. So he had a lot of backend expertise. And then Bob Pinsler is an IT professional, former council member. And he actually was in the seat of selling some of these products early on in their development. And so had a great articulation of identifying salesmanship versus substance. And so had a lot of great questions and feedback there. So like I said, big thanks to all those folks. Without them and the council subcommittee as well, this process really wouldn't have moved forward as smoothly or as effectively. So just wanted to highlight them. So thank you for allowing me to do that. And so just moving into what the selection process looked like. When our RFI was released in June of 2022, we were pleased we got 19 responses. And so that's why we're giving a big thank you to those subcommittee members because they had to wade through all 19 of these proposals and score them and evaluate them. We looked at usability, we looked at content management, the backend. We looked at their support and implementation methodologies, the underlying technology, security features, their project experience, their references and their costs. So there was a lot of areas that we were scoring them on and evaluating. And although the, the order of the top five varied a little bit between our two subcommittees, which were completely separate in their deliberations, the top five was Civic Plus, Granicus, Interpersonal Frequency, Planeteria, and Revise. And that's just in alphabetical order there. And so from there, we took those five, five, you know, five intermediate finalists and invited them to provide a scripted online demonstration. We cut it, we held them to an hour sharp. And so basically had them walk through creating webpages, walk through what their community engagement process looked like, and really webpages, walk through what their community engagement process looked like, and really just show us something that wasn't just a canned, out of the box, here's my sales presentation, you're going to love it. We really asked them to show some, some, some fine functionality, and we were able to ask them questions and follow up through that. And so with that process, after the online demonstrations, we came down to a final two, and that was Civic Plus and Revice. And so the next step in that process was we had a city manager interview, and basically in that, we handled any general follow-up that had come from both of the, independently from the subcommittees, followed up on those questions, and then really tried to ask some tough questions on what their business model is, or acquisition history, growth strategy, and really the benefits of what makes them the best platform for us. And sort of through that conversation, we really found Revice to be our preferred vendor. And some of the, some of the main things here that I'll highlight, they have really strong search capabilities, and so their websites are, you know, search functionality forward, they have the ability to offer a curated search where we can type in the top items that people are searching on our website and really direct them to the pages that get them the information that they need as quickly as possible. They're a company that focuses exclusively on government websites, so they're not out acquiring, you know, different platforms, different applications. This is something they do on a daily basis and have done for the life of their company, and so we feel real comfortable with that expertise. They also offer custom templates, which that's for the city overall, so we can make it whatever we want, but also unlimited flexibility for departments that have a special mandate, police, fire, library, that have discrete functionality that they need to address through the website. They can have custom templates that sort of build off of the main theme, but give them some additional tools to work with. And then being a standalone provider, they really have a great ability to integrate across platforms. So with our agenda management platform, with some of our building and finance tools, we'll be able to integrate some things and hopefully see some great gains there. And then also, something that was sort of reflected across this process, they just, they've taken a lot of cities similar to ours that have a website that's outdated, has good information, but a lot of times too much information that people can't access quickly, and they just have a great articulation of getting from where we are to where we want to be, to have a modern nimble website that people actually can get business done when they go to. And so that, those were some of the things that really stood out, stood out to us through that process. And that, once we made that recommendation after that city manager interview, that was a decision that was supported across both subcommittees, moving forward with Revice. And as I've talked to the references, these ones really stand out, Olympia, Des Moines, Iowa, and New Bern, Connecticut, spoke to the people that have really been project managing there, and they've said how great Revice was to work with. They do deliver on that customizable ethic that they really put forward. Olympia was actually just awarded City County Communications Marketing Association Savvy Award, which basically is their, that, the 3C organization, their highest, highest award for a website. So, and in talking to their project manager, he's really asked them to deliver some discrete functionality on the website, and they've been able to do it, customize code, enhance their search functions, which we felt stood above already, and even improving it. So just kind of spoke to that, that constant improvement. And their pricing was also very reasonable, and it was all-inclusive. Those, those additional department pages, some of the other providers could have provided those, those individual sites for our different departments, but would have been extra to tack those on. And so this was something that we were able to negotiate good pricing for both the implementation and the annual rates. So that's, that's kind of the end of my presentation. I don't know, Mike, if you have anything that you want to add before we get to any questions from council?
Yeah, one thing that stood out for me with Revice as we got to the finalists is that their core competency is government websites. A lot of the other interested proprietors, they're, they have a corporate approach, they're acquiring software, they're building other programs, they're developing new, new online portals, which, you know, in some instances can be attractive, but it starts to distract, I think, from what we're really procuring here, which is a base platform to work with. We don't want to be limited in the future to just the sort of mothership corporate model. We want to make sure we have the ability to integrate new third-party platforms, programs, constantly we're adding and exploring new technologies. So Revice, I thought, offered us the best form to do that into the future, kind of a hub and spoke, and they're committed to that technology. That's their core competency. And that, to me, was, I think, what set them apart, at least, from the finalists that we evaluated. And again, I just can't thank the community working group enough. Sheila, Bhavesh, Dr. Papa, Bob, all brought really unique perspectives to this, came at it from a completely different lens, and I think it was that sort of cross-section of perspective that really helped, I think, guide and, and provide some insight and insightful questioning as, as we evaluated the different responses. So thanks to them, and we're excited to get working. Revice contract's ready to go. Luke has been a little bit humble here, but he negotiated a fair price with them. So this is an investment, but one that is quite reasonable, all things considered, and we're looking forward to building our, our new platform here for the residents to utilize.
Thank you. You know, first I want to thank you guys here and, and staff for putting all this together. I mean, Luke, you did a phenomenal job at getting, herding cats of five, was it five residents and two council members, all of which have real jobs, day jobs, in addition to this, getting schedules, we kind of figured that all out, and spending the time to do the interviews, doing the recording, getting a really quality structure for the RFP. You can use a lot of your prior job experience, which was awesome, I saw that, I flowed through, that was a really positive thing coming from a hire that our city manager has done, and that's bringing you in, and it's just, I, I saw that RFP that went out, and I was like, wow, this is really good, it's quality. And because of that, we got 19 responses back. And I know it sounds like great for everyone, but for those, Councilmember Lowenstein and I, you know, just looking at my notes, my last saved document time was 11:30 at night on, in the middle of July, and it was a lot of time to go through every single one of their responses, categorize them, score them, add everything up, look at this, take a second look, really get familiar with it, and come to a good hour or two long meeting, bring it down to the top five, and then looking at the, every top five had one hour of time, five hours of video time we had to watch, and kind of went from there. So it was a lot of work, and I really want to thank the residents that were involved on this, because they spent way more time than we did. And we were, like you said, worked completely separately. And one of the things I want to let the public know about why, one of the things that was so difficult, what we're really choosing tonight is, our city manager talked about a hub and spoke model versus a kind of a gluing model, or how you want to, product you want to choose. There's a lot of products out there nowadays for government websites, and a lot of companies have changed from just providing the website to providing a lot of different services. For instance, agenda management, like we have Q code for our municipal code, searching that, video streaming, access, we have access for Dondo. There's a lot of these third-party programs, and a lot of companies have focused in on solving all of those, all those problems individually, and then bringing them out into their mothership, so to speak. And that brings you into their ecosystem, but the problem that ecosystem is, you're stuck in their ecosystem. So what we chose here with Revice is kind of this, this model where we use their tools to glue and stick into all the other third-party services, which is going to give us a lot more flexibility. It's a lot more expensive, but it's going to give us a lot more flexibility. And I know we've talked a lot about agenda management, we've talked about video streaming, we've talked about, you know, code enforcement, all these different tools that we can use. Other cities use different tools, and I for sure, Zach, want to update Q code, which is a municipal version of following our laws online. Some products out there, you create an account, and they'll notify you if there's impending changes, or if, you can look at past prior history and changes. So there's a lot of really quality products out there that's now really, that we could use. The last thing I'll say is that, you know, this is really a platform that we're going to be able to work off of in the future to do all these updates. So online permitting, online submission of forms, when you're looking for things, it's going to be dynamic, and we're going to be able to jump off into other services. And that, to me, is probably the most important thing. And of course, the Revice employees, I met them at Cal Cities down in Long Beach, met the owner, didn't even say he was the owner, through the video process, we really got to see the personality of the employees that work there, they're very enthusiastic, the owner is awesome, I talked tech with him for about 15, 20 minutes easily, and they know their stuff, they have a great platform, it's well-tested, and this is all they do, is government websites, city municipal websites. So very comfortable with this, and can't wait to get this going, and we'll have it done by the end of the year, so it'd be fantastic.
The contract should be executed by the end of the year.
Yeah, we'll have it executed.
Which year are you referring to?
I didn't specify that, Councilmember Abaji.
All right. So I also want to commend our staff, thank you for working with the residents in the subcommittee, and I'm going to read Sheila Lamb's comment here, because it's a good one, and really thank Sheila Lamb, because every single time somebody emailed me from, from the district or the city saying, hey, could we find out more information on this or that? Can you update us on when our slurry seal is coming, when our street's going to be repaid? It's like, that would be an amazing thing to be on the website. Sheila, can you make sure that the subcommittee makes sure that the vendor can get this on the website? So for the folks out there who are like, what is this website going to be like? Our goal is to make sure that it has every single thing you could possibly want from the city, you can access it on there, including make your request for city services on there. And so my first question actually is, I see this contract not to exceed $120,000, then you're going to bring us amendments to exceed $120,000 later on, but what is our, will we include in the contract essentially terms for more pages or more build-out that we need as we realize, okay, hey, we would love to have this service up there?
Yeah, so we've got, the way it's, it's structured now, we have pages that can come over, and so we've got roughly 1,000 pages on our website currently, and so we anticipate significant cuts to that, and so we'll be, be porting over significantly less than that. So we expect to be underneath the amount of pages pulling over, but the CMS that they offer, the content management system, it allows us to create those new pages on the fly ourselves. And one of the things also included in the contract is unlimited training. So say we get to the end of our expertise, and it's like, hey, we'd really love to build this, they will, you know, sit down with us via Zoom and kind of walk us through how to do that. So hopefully, and the experience I'm hearing from, from the folks that already are contracted with them, there aren't a lot of gotchas, because Revice really holds themselves to delivering on the contract. And so, you know, I can't say there, there won't be anything in the future, but I certainly hope we can keep it to this amount and deliver a product that, that people are excited about with, with the figures that are quoted here.
Awesome. And I want to also thank, thank you District 4, because three of those four residents for, came from District 4. So thanks for getting activated and taking a part in our city. And hey, when you see this resident rollout, or this website roll out in several months or a year, don't think, oh, you got to accept it as is. If there's improvements or changes that can be made to it, email us, email your council members, email, you know, email all of us and say, hey, why isn't this available on the website? So we can get that change underway, especially soon after the website comes out. So I'll read Commissioner Lamb's comment. As a member of the website subcommittee, I want to thank City Manager Wazansky for his forward thinking to prioritize the upgrade of the Redondo Beach website. The new website will increase residents' access to timely information to give feedback about important issues and increase resident participation in civic life. Residents will have greater access to important services, increased ability to pay for a wide range of permits and programs, give feedback on issues using, using surveys, and through the implementation of a new search engine, residents will be able to find the information they need when they need it. I want to also thank Luke Smood, who led the subcommittee team for his positive engaging manner and leadership in the task of evaluating the potential website developers. Luke created an evaluative process and web-based tool that made our decision-making tasks expeditious, objective and high in quality. Our meetings began and ended on time, our work product was delivered on time, and through the entire process, Luke kept the pace forward moving without seeming rushed. It is through this high-quality process that Revice was chosen as the best website developer to serve the needs of the city and residents of Redondo Beach. With the ability to engage residents with more resources, more information and greater understanding, this new online engagement will improve community capacity to understand local issues and empower residents to participate in their community more fully. Diverse groups can weigh in on issues that matter to them. I look forward to the launching of this new website that will catapult Redondo Beach into the 21st century digital age. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just remind everyone, too, this is all lining up. We have quality management here happening, the logo updates, we have fresh content, fresh update and imagery, it's going to be a whole rebranding effort for the city of Redondo, for us really breaking out of our shell and becoming a new city. Councilmember Lowenstein?
Yeah, I want to echo the thanks to both of you. I know you put a lot of time into it. It was a complicated process, and you made it, I don't want to say easy, because it was, as Mayor Protem, Mayor and I mentioned, it was a lot of, a lot of due diligence that was done. And it's interesting, the company that I started with a preference for changed towards the end, right? And as you kind of piece through it, you saw their strengths. And I, and we're doing it, actually, I think, for a relatively good price. So, you know, the website, I'm not telling anybody anything anybody else doesn't know, but it's the first impression that many people get of our city. And it's also the, the tool they use the most. I mean, nobody calls hardly anymore, email maybe, but they now will be able to interact really well with the website based on all the, the features that Revice is going to bring to us. And I think they can actually build custom things as well, too, as has been said. So folks that are out there, you don't see something that you want to see, let us know and send us an email. The other thing that I'm not sure that we've talked about is, there's going to be a complete refresh available to us after three years.
Four years.
Four years? Well, after the third year, it's the fourth year that they do it.
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, so, which is great. I mean, this has been needed for quite a while. What's the actual timeline in terms of completion?
They say the, the implementation takes between 21 and 28 weeks, just depending on how, how hard we push from our end, essentially. Obviously, it's kind of a wonky time now going into the holidays, so those first several weeks, there's a little bit of a gap that's going to be there, but, you know, we expect it delivered in the middle of next year for, for sure.
Okay, thank you. And then to Mr. Nelson's comment, yes, this is a hosted solution.
Correct.
And with actually backup, so hopefully we'll have, you know, I know one of the problems has been reaching the website in a quick manner, and I know that this will improve.
Yep.
They have, the website will be duplicated over a couple geographic locations, so. So great work, everybody. Thank you for the members of the community that served on this and on working up there, so thank you.
Thank you. Any members of the public want to come down and talk? Oh, man, nobody? Oh, there you go, come on. This is important, folks.
You guys made a good choice, I can say that much. The other, Civic Plus doesn't even have an SSL certificate, they're trying to go for, like, for government contracts and stuff. Taking a quick peek at them, it actually seems like, you know, they have a pretty decent backend. The other company was also just reselling some other company CMS to you guys, so.
You know your stuff. How do you know your, identify yourself, first of all, your name?
I'm Dan, District 2.
Last name?
Collins, engineer, so I do a lot of this kind of stuff.
IT stuff?
Yeah. IT, infrastructure systems administration, DevOps engineering.
Should have come down here six months ago.
I didn't know it was happening.
Just kidding. Put you on the working group.
Yeah. For the refresh, we'll grab it.
You figured that out real quick, so that's very impressive. Yeah. I thought the same thing. And Civic, and to Councilmember Lowenstein's point, Civic Plus, or Revice is actually, to me, barely made in the top five originally, because their original RFP that they, the proposal they sent back to us, I had feelings, I saw, I looked, and like, I know there's more here, but it's just not quite what I was thinking. And then when I finally went into the final solutions and final days, I'm like, dude, this is truly the best product. Any other else? Anyone else? All right, so I'll make a motion.
There's none on Zoom, for the record.
Okay.
We have two ecomments.
Two ecomments and none on Zoom, okay, I think we read most of those. Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve this contract and agreement for Revice.
Second.
Thank you. I don't think there's anything else that you need from us.
Nope, that's it, we'll get to work.
Perfect. All right, anyone else? Questions or comments? Last. All right, any other comments from the council? Nope. All right, all in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? Perfect, passes unanimously. So, brings us to item N2, investment policy, discussion and possible action regarding annual review of the city's statement of investment policy, our, our city treasurer, Steve Deals, and I think, I less, you're here, too, there you go. And I believe this went to the Budget and Finance Commission the other day as well, so motion to receive and file.
Okay, hello, everybody. Nice to see you in person.
Yeah, it's a big difference.
Good to be back. I'm Stephen Deals, your city treasurer, and we, my esteemed And we, my esteemed chief deputy treasurer, Malash Mehta, are here to present to you the annual review of the investment policy. I have a correction we did write in the policy that we have no amendments to the current investment policy. But based on our meeting with the Budget and Finance Commission, what we're circulating to you right now is, with to you right now is the list of approved broker dealers that we would like to add to the policy. Other than that, there have been no legislative changes that would require any changes to our investment policy. And that really concludes my report.
Okay, I have a quick question. Last time that we came here and did this, I believe, was a year, two years ago, we talked about one of our investments was a tobacco company.
Philip Morris.
Philip Morris, actually Monsanto or something, they changed their name?
No, no, that's Altra.
Altra, yeah, they all change names, rebranding efforts. Did we continue to use them? What's?
We sold at your recommendation. We had choices. You were, it was a pretty generous recommendation to allow us not to make any further investments in that sector, in the tobacco sector. Or we could sell the investment. And we sold the investment at quite a profit, actually. So we divested and then we reinvested and it's gone.
Okay, so just for the public, so they're not reading this and seeing this, what is our current state of the policy and how are we doing financially speaking?
Well, these are very interesting times because interest rates are increasing. So our earnings are up to such a degree that we've substantially underestimated our earnings for the year. So we'll be revising our projected earnings at mid-year. So it's going very well. The policy is the framework with which that, with which that, with which we use to invest. Quarterly, when we give you your quarterly reports, you already approved it on consent today. But we tell you where we stand with respect to the policy and if we're in compliance, and we are. So thanks to that policy, we maintain the priorities of safety, liquidity, and yield. And we meet the city's spending requirements while investing our money. And at the same time, we're earning a really decent yield right now. So the policy is very good. It is a best practice. It's not required by law. And there actually are some cities that don't have investment policies. So we take it for granted that we do this. But we do it because it's a best practice, not because we're required to. By law, we're required to as a matter of good practice and responsibility to the residents of the city.
What's the total value of the assets that we have in?
It's at an all-time high right now, approaching 110 million.
110 million?
Yeah, it's in your quarterly report that you already approved, yeah.
For the public, though.
Oh, yeah, okay.
A lot of words here.
That actually is something we probably should have presented in context because it's very good to present with the investment policy because it shows you what the policy does, allows us to invest in and what the results are. But nevertheless, it's in your packet, you've approved it. We do have an all-time high of our investment portfolio right now.
Okay, Councilmember Obagi.
Mr. Treasurer, great to see you. Glad you could climb out from behind all those yes-on-recall signs. I think we counted about seven of them between your home and business.
That's highly inappropriate for you to talk about right now. But you might think that's funny, but I don't.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, figured something you put out in the public wasn't like a private communication, right?
I'm sorry?
It wasn't.
I think you're talking about something that's not on the agenda. But if you want to talk about that, I'll be happy to talk about you some other time. But I will not talk about that in public right now. Highly inappropriate.
Anyway, it was a joke. Great to see you climb out from behind those signs. And question.
It was to see you surviving a recall effort.
Yes, thriving through one, actually.
You know, ironically, that you had done that to your predecessors, as a matter of fact. You organized.
Guys, listen, I get it.
He brought this up. He's making a comment and trying to be funny, and I'm responding.
Go for it, I'll listen.
No, we're going to get the city attorney out here and he's going to come out here and,
I'll listen.
And do what he needs to do. So let's just, let's just move forward from here.
All right. As far as this investment policy, is all our money put into, you know, all these, all these approved broker dealers or is it split up? How does that work?
We invest in a ladder format primarily over time, measuring our weighted average maturity. And then in doing so, when we have liquidity, excess liquidity in order to invest, we look at the appropriate investments at the time based on our weighted average maturity requirements and look at the best opportunities for yield and maturity according to our cash flow needs. And within those requirements, we look at that range of broker dealers and see what our best opportunity is.
Got it. So is this a list of recommended new broker dealers that you want us to authorize?
No, it's the broker dealers that our investment advisor currently uses and we're just making it public who they use.
Okay. Great, that's my only question.
Okay, Councilmember Lonestein.
Yeah, thanks, Steve, for the report. And thank you for selling Philip Morris, appreciate that. The only other thing that I would have us look at perhaps is ExxonMobil. And that is because as a city, we've made it a focus to lower our carbon footprint. And just out of coincidence, today was their highest price ever. It's at $114. So I think we do really well if we consider looking at that. Is it possible to be open to that?
I'm sorry, is it possible?
To actually look at perhaps selling ExxonMobil and reinvesting in something else?
Well, so when we had this discussion before, I don't recommend doing that because we're a buy and hold in investment. I mean, that's what it says in the policy. We don't sell things on a whim. If you don't want to invest in that kind of thing, you might want to have a discussion and maybe add it to the policy or make a recommendation to your investor, which would be me. But on a whim, because it seems high, we want to sell it now, no. I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it on that basis. But as, since the, since interest rates are going up, our existing investments have, they're long, were buy and hold. They were all purchased before interest rates had risen. So as they expire, or they mature, that is, we will reinvest if we have the liquidity requirements. And then we'll earn higher interest rates. But I wouldn't recommend selling something because we don't like it right at the moment.
Okay, well, what I was really referring to was, it kind of goes contrary to what we, as a council, have done in terms of electric vehicle support. And my thought was, well, if we're going to continue that way, and I'm a buy and hold person myself. I mean, almost everything I do is buy and I hold. But I tend to invest in things I believe in, and Exxon is not one of the things. I do play, I believe they play their part in our economy, but long-term, you know. I wouldn't necessarily be recommending this if it were at its low point, but it's at its entire high point over, I'm looking at a chart over five or six years. I assume it's its highest point ever. So that would be my recommendation, is we look at divesting from that and investing. The other companies look fine to me. A lot of them are financial, that's great. But that's my thought on it. I don't know how the rest of the council.
Ironically, this discussion, though, is about the policy, not about specific investments. So we could have spoken about the specific investment if we had looked at the quarterly report. But I understand what you're saying, you know.
Well, I'd like to hear from you why you think it's a bad idea to sell, sell it rather than use in general.
It's a bad idea to do it on a whim. But I mean, on the other hand, if you're looking at energy in total, electric cars are run on fossil fuels, that's the irony. So if it weren't for oil and gas, you wouldn't have the mining opportunities of the energy to get the lithium out of the ground and all of the other things that you need. So the change to green energy is a process. It's not a place that we're at.
Yeah.
And right now, I think Exxon is probably contributing more to the, the transition to a green economy than people would recognize.
Okay, okay. Well, I'll leave it to my fellow council members if they agree with me or not. It's okay. I'd love to hear from them if they.
I understand your point, but they're transitioning to, they're a business, they want to make money. So they're transitioning, there are things they can do. Gas companies doing hydrogen now, clean hydrogen, that's very much what Europe is doing. Councilmember Horvath.
Steve, so to Todd's point, though, would it be possible between now and next year or the next time a quarterly report comes out to give us an update on if the council was to change a policy specific to, you know, ExxonMobil, what you would recommend as something that you, if you were to divest, would make sense to invest in that would have some type of parity with the type of returns that you see with ExxonMobil?
Yeah, and we do that every time an investment matures, anyway. So it could be Costco, it could be Honda. But I mean, the irony is, you know, Honda's making green cars, but they also make gasoline and diesel cars, too. So including generators that are run on petroleum products. So it's not that clean a distinction to want to say, I think, that, yeah.
No, I get what you're getting at, right? And, you know, without getting into the weeds on it, I'm just trying to entertain the idea that, you know, he makes a valid point, right? A lot of the policies that the council has enacted are moving away from a fossil fuel-type perspective, right? We have a climate action plan, we've made a lot of decisions. I'm not saying whether it's right or wrong from the investment policy perspective. But to his point, you know, would it be something that could be explored? Not now on a whim, as you're mentioning, but something that could be thought about in a more productive manner as to whether or not it does make sense or not, maybe, you know, from an investment policy perspective?
I'm going to say, you're not going to like my answer, but the answer is no. Because remember when I present this to you, it's safety, liquidity, yield, in that order. So if you're asking to do safety, liquidity, yield, and social justice, or, you know, or the equivalent, or, you know, green justice or something, then we have to factor that into those priorities and find out, you know, where they are. And that is so subjective and complicated that it's not something that I would recommend at all. It's not like we're overweighted in petroleum and we're underweighted in, you know, efforts to be green. As a rule, the city works very hard to keep, you know, the ocean clean nearby, to keep our storm drains clean, and to use solar energy where possible and to reduce energy. I mean, all the things that we do as a city, I think, weighs into what we're talking about here with investments as well. So I would not recommend adding social justice, et cetera, to safety, liquidity, yield.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any members of the public wants to come down and speak to this item?
Good evening, Mayor Protam, council, Mr. Deals, Eugene Solomon, Redondo Beach. As part of your investment policy, there is a part of the policy where the city treasurer emails you the monthly investment reports to the mayor and council. That's part of the investment policy. So those should be available to you to review on a monthly basis.
Does that, does that monthly report have all the people that are invested that we have? What does that cover? I don't think I've ever seen them before.
You get it every month, yes, sir. Yep.
On consent calendar? On consent calendar, monthly?
No, no, we email it to you every month. You get a monthly investment report from us.
Who's the email from?
City treasurer.
Yourself?
I don't get it.
I don't either.
I don't either.
So I have to say you get it or don't?
No, I don't.
You have an email address called mayorsandcouncil, MCC. And so you should all be on it.
It should be mayor, council.
We'll double check.
Mayor, council.
Never, never gotten it. No emails from Mr. Deals.
And if I expand it out, all of us are on there?
That would explain your lack of comments when we send it out.
You should get a, you should get an error back.
Thank God we're getting it.
We don't. No, look in your send.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon.
It's mayor, because I put mayor and city councils. I think that could be the reason.
Yeah, we're not getting any errors back.
Mayor, council@redondo.org is his email address. There's nothing else that comes up in the address book.
Does that sound familiar? It just, in the address book, I put, we put mayor and council. Mayor and.
Yeah, so can.
Put it this way, residents are able to email all of us all the time, so.
So can we, since you guys provide this, can you send that to us for the last 12 months so we can look at that?
Yeah, we can do that, sure.
Can you CC the city clerk also, please?
Sure. Say again?
You CC the city clerk.
Yes, and you are CC, she is CC.
I'm not getting them either.
No. It's all of us, councilmembers, mayor, and Renee.
Yeah, if you go to the city website, you can pull our addresses off of that.
All right, so we are, we send them, I approve it, he sends it out. It's a nice little report. So if you've been missing it, you'll start getting them.
Perfect, yeah. So send that to us, CC her. And any other questions from public?
Okay, I have no Zoom comment and no ecomment, for the record.
Okay, Councilmember Horvath, your hand is still up or no?
I'll just make a motion to approve then.
Okay.
As amended, not receiving a file, we want to amend that with the list, please.
And I'd like to make an amendment to that, to email the city council the last year's worth of quarterly reports and CC the city clerk.
Monthly reports, you mean?
Monthly reports, thank you, monthly reports. Is that good? Laura?
Yeah.
All right. All right, any other comments from the public? Seeing none, no more comments here? All right, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Fantastic, moving right along. All right, item N3. So this is discussion and possible action regarding agreements to review the Beach Cities Health District Healthy Living Campus Project. So, and going through this, this is not the EIR, this is not the project, so everyone knows and understands. This is just a reimbursement agreement. And we have three places that we're getting reimbursements from. So Ms. Forbes.
Yes, thank you. As you're aware, the Beach Cities Health District is in the planning and design stages of the Healthy Living Campus Project at 514 North Prospect Avenue. They intend to improve and expand the facilities and programs at the site. The project has required a California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, environmental impact report to review the environmental impacts. And since BCHD is a public agency, it's considered the lead agency in preparing that environmental document. As they're finalizing their application for the Phase One portion for the discretionary approvals that'll come to the city for review, we're now looking at, they're going to have that application for a conditional use permit and for planning commission design review. And that Phase One is the residential care for the elderly, the program for all-inclusive care for the elderly, community services such as social workers and other assistance programs, open space and parking. As we're moving through that, even though they've completed the EIR, as they're looking at the more detailed project description, what we want to do as a city is make sure that all the components of that Phase One have been reviewed in the EIR. So we're looking at doing a peer review. And then as well, due to the size and complexity of the project, there is a demand for consultants to conduct professional planning review and for outside legal counsel to address legal matters in the SEQA and land use. And we did issue a request for quotes in August and reviewed those proposals. We conducted direct outreach to several firms specializing in environmental and environmental and land use planning. The recommendation is to utilize placeworks for the professional planning review and RingCon consultants to conduct the environmental peer review. Both firms are highly qualified in their fields and there's no conflict of interest with either of those firms reviewing the Beach Cities Health District project. These are typical contracts that we see. Other municipalities do it as well when we're doing a review of larger projects or doing environmental review, and as well, the reimbursement agreements that go along with that. So even though Beach Cities Health District will reimburse for the cost, it's the city's contract with the consultants. They're like an extension of our city staff. And as well, the city has the direct contact with the consultants. The developer will not have the ability to just direct the work of those consultants. So the contracts that you have before you are the one with Placeworks, the one with RINCON. We already have a contract with the legal firm. And then it's the reimbursement agreement with Beach Cities Health District. And I'll just turn it over to you if you have any questions.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. So I was going through the reimbursement portion of it, and let's see here, page 1,046. I should have brought it up, there you go. 1,056. Item H, page 3 of 9 on reimbursement agreement. Within 14 days after the effective date, which I guess would be today, right? Assumed, BCHD shall make a payment of $150,000 to the city as advance on city costs and fees for environmental review and professional planning review by consultants. And then Section I says, "Following commencement of preparation of the environmental review and professional planning review of the proposed project, city shall request, but in no event, if the advance is sufficient to pay such fees and costs, the BCHD provide the city with the remainder of the $166,000 payment for costs and fees that be incurred in preparation of environmental review." So I really like the way you guys have your steps laid out. But I'm a little confused on when that second portion kicks in because you have the review and kickoff meeting, kickoff meeting, and then you have application design review. So is that when the second portion gets kicked off regarding the payment, $166,000? Or does $166,000 come in at a different time? In the very beginning?
Yeah, for this, with the, it's once they get to a certain, you know, once they've hit that $150,000 mark, we can kick in and request that additional amount for the remaining amount so that we'll have that available. So it's just at that point, you know, it says, "But in no event, if the advance is sufficient to pay such fees." So as we're going through and the advance is available to pay the fees as those different services are rendered, once we hit that $150,000, at that point, we can request the remaining $166,755.
Okay. So essentially, it's a $150,000 down payment. You work that off, retainer. And then as soon as you hit that $150, we bill that to you, and then we expect the $166?
Yes.
Okay. I really liked the scope of services that everyone was providing. It was very detail-oriented. I do have a question on the legal firm that we're using. They didn't provide a scope of services. It was just a straight $100,000 fee. Is that, what are they providing for us? It's outside consultancy. It uses Minst, Levin, Cohen, Ferris, Glosski, and Pompeo.
Correct. So if there are questions regarding the entitlements that are being reviewed from a legal aspect, then they would review that. They basically would act as, give legal support to RINCON and Placeworks in the review of the applications.
So rather than us taking time away from our other work, since they're paying for it, you know, if the council doesn't want to do it, then, and we're certainly not budgeted for that expense. So what would happen is Ms. Park would be assigned that, and it would take away from the other matters that she has. But...
What happens if we run into $110,000, $150,000? Come back with a second agreement? Do they, do we have to come to them and say, hey, listen, we're writing?
We do. Or we transition to us doing the legal work. We asked, this is John Wellner's firm, we asked him to take some time with the estimate because I didn't want, I don't want to be put in the position of having to ask for more money or transitioning. We were a little bit limited because we have conflicts with many of the other firms that we would use with Beach Cities Health District, or we got a proposal from Alan Mackens, but they... What?
Are they suing us?
No, they're not suing us, but they defended Redondo Beach waterfront during the SEQA process and Legata before they switched out. I'm not suggesting Sahagi because I didn't think that was the, would be the council's preference. And so that left John Wellner's firm.
Okay. You, Brandy, Ms. Forbes, you had a comment in here in your staffer presentation that you guys will not be talking to BCHD.
It's not that we wouldn't be talking to them. It's that Beach Cities Health District wouldn't be able to direct...
Right, that's what I mean.
Yeah, the consultants.
And they're not talking directly to consultants either?
Only if we're having meetings and staff would be attending those as well. We, typically with applications, you know, there's additional information or clarification that we want to get from an applicant. And so we will have, you know, meetings with them. But it's not going to be something at the, you know, where it's a direction from Beach Cities Health District and the city's not involved in it, the city staff.
To reaffirm that point, the key takeaway here is that the work of these two consultants will be at the direction of staff, not at the direction of the Health District.
Correct.
So on page 1,058, last night when I was going through this, under Section 6 Communications, it says, "BCHD agrees that neither BCHD nor its employees or agents will contact the environmental consultant, professional planning consultant, or city's outside legal counsel in connection with the proposed project without prior approval from the city, except that BCHD's attorneys may contact city's outside legal counsel." So you're saying in the first part here that they are not going to be, neither BCHD nor its employees will not contact city's outside legal contact, but then the last sentence or part of that sentence says they can, they will be contacting?
It says their attorneys can. So this goes along with Section 5, which is the information sharing. And the city may, in the future, have mutual interests with Beach Cities Health District if, for example, the city, after all the appropriate hearings, issues entitlements. And then the city gets sued over those entitlements. So for example, the reason you would want me to speak to their attorneys or outside counsel to speak to their attorneys, we may identify, hey, a potential liability that could befall BCHD and Redondo if we grant the entitlement. Well, we don't want that to waive, you know, if I advise Ms. Forbes of, hey, that's a potential liability, and we tell their attorneys, we're saying that doesn't waive the attorney-client privilege. So that's the reason for allowing attorney-to-attorney speak, and it goes with the, to speak directly. If you don't want that, then take it out, and we won't speak to them. It's up to you.
My concern is that if this does end in a tricky lawsuit and somebody sues, I mean, could they say, could people potentially say then, hey, you guys were working together, now we're stuck together? We're forced to be stuck together? Or it's not our project, it's not our agreement, we're just reviewing this, and we're just telling you, hey, listen, and I want to keep as much liability away from us?
So that's the reason for 5 and 6. The only reason, we're not stuck with them. But if the city approves the entitlements, we may be in the same boat as them. And we don't want to be reticent to share any concerns about liability upfront. I have no qualms. If you take 5 and 6, you know, the last sentence is 6 out, and you take 5 out. But if the city grants the entitlements...
We are in the same boat.
Yeah. Now, on the other hand, I can foresee the city denies entitlements. And then we're in exactly opposite boats.
Right.
With them challenging, you know, with them challenging us. I can't foresee what the city will ultimately end up doing. But that's the reason for 5 and 6, so that we can feel free to point out stuff to them that we may have advised Ms. Forbes and not have it away the attorney-client privilege. Because normally, if I tell her something, or Ms. Park does, or outside counsel, if they're in the room, that weighs the attorney-client privilege.
So to that point, during a couple of my community meetings, it's been brought up a few times, hey, the city's having meetings with BCHD, and we did public records requests. And it's coming back as confidential, and we can't let you know what it's about, or the notes, or communications, or dates, or times. And I said, well, the only reason that would happen is if there's an attorney in a room or there is some type of real estate negotiation or protected product, or protected work product. So does this, if we were to bring in attorneys then, and staff and consultants come together, would that be considered protected conversation and meetings?
Well, it wouldn't waive attorney-client privilege, yeah. But I'm not sure what that, I've seen some requests, but I was invited to a meeting via Zoom, and it asked for, you know, notes and stuff. And I didn't attend. I was invited at the request of Ms. Park, I mean, Ms. Forbes because she didn't want to appear, you know, without a counsel when they were going to have the counsel.
Okay.
But you can remove it, 5 and delete 6. I have no qualms. Just know that those are the potential liability concerns. Because a lot of the comments I've seen don't seem to appreciate, this is not the SEQA process. This is after SEQA's already been certified by them. And after the time to file legal challenges ended, it's peer review so that the city will have as much information as possible to make its determination on the entitlement process.
Page 1,042, consultant duties, page 10 there. Tasks 2.2, general plan and zoning consistency analysis. There was an interesting comment made by Scott Baron on the planning commission. They were reviewing some project, I think, or somewhere. And there was a matrix presented to them about things, parts of the project or parts, things that were, I forgot what meeting it was, but there was a matrix format regarding what part of the city's goals and, let's see, general plan and zoning were consistent. But I believe it was him, it could have been someone else that said, what about a matrix of things that were not consistent or not consistent with the general plan or the zoning consistencies? Would we be presenting that as well in addition to this here? Or does that need to be added?
What we do is we review it per what the requirements are for conditional use permit and for planning commission design review. Ultimately, we don't go through, like, every single goal and policy and say this isn't contrary to it. We evaluate the general plan to determine what, you know, the goals and policies to determine what is aligned with it. And we do verify that nothing is contrary to what the general plan says. And, you know, that's just, that's a technicality because what we're doing is showing that it is consistent and that there are goals and policies that would reflect that. If there was anything that was inconsistent, that is also something that we would have to point out. But we don't go through every goal and policy to say, yes, doesn't apply, doesn't apply, doesn't apply. We just pull out the ones that would apply as far as what is consistent. And if there was something that wasn't consistent, pointing that out.
So I take it, they give us the plan. We review it kickoff meeting, it was great. The steps are so excellent. Kickoff meetings, go through different portions of it, comes back, hey, here's the problems, here are the good, bad, and ugly. Here's the great stuff. And then things get fixed? It goes back again for a second round? Or no?
Yes.
For updates?
Yeah, so they would provide any revisions that would be required to demonstrate that, you know, whatever it needs to meet. And then if there's, you know, if there are anything, if there are any revisions beyond that or any additional information they didn't provide that was requested of them, at that point, those additional reviews would, by the consultant, would then require us to come back and amend the contract. So, you know, we're expecting, because they came in with a pre-application and we went through that as staff of, here are all the things that you're going to need to submit with your application. Our expectation is that they're going to make sure that they have all of those things from the start. And there may be a few questions, you know, so it narrows down that continued review, revise, review, revise. So it's really, you know, that one revision, if there's anything beyond that because they're not making the changes that are requested of them, then that might require an amendment to the contract.
Okay. And this includes City Council, public, excuse me, Planning Commission, public hearings. This does not get appealed, or does not become the City Council unless appealed, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's it, all I have for now. Councilmember MD?
Yeah, I think you covered it. I just basically wanted to reiterate to the public, this is just simply a reimbursement agreement. This is simply that, to alleviate from staff having to do all the work. This is very, it's just straightforward. There's nothing being approved tonight. It's simply a reimbursement agreement so that we don't have, we can hire a consultant and not have our staff do all the work. Correct?
Correct.
That was it.
Okay, Councilmember Obaji?
I'll add to that, that us accepting this, the city accepting this money as reimbursement, I don't think changes the viewpoint of any of the council members up here to the extent they formed any opinion. And I don't think, you know, it's just making, being fiscally prudent and making sure that people who are developing in our city are reimbursing us for the cost of that development. A concern I have, though, is going back to our Reno Planning Director, Forbes. Placeworks was our consultant on Reno, right?
No, actually, they are our consultant on our general plan update.
Sorry, general plan update, right? And if I recall, as part of our general plan update, we're updating the various zones in the city and what their definitions were, what they included, correct?
It's, we're looking at the land use.[1662.89] It's not the zoning specifically, it's the land use in the general plan. To be clear, this particular site has, the G-PAC did not make any recommendations for changes, and the City Council did not direct any changes to the site.
Okay, I thought that when Placeworks came to us with a new definition for public land that they had included, had changed.
Hasn't been accepted yet.
Oh, that had not been accepted yet?
It's got to get approved by the voters.
Right, but you gave direction, so all that they provided was anything that was recommended by the General Plan Advisory Committee. It's not the recommendation specifically of Placeworks.
Okay, so just to be clear and complete my thought, they had come forward with a recommendation to incorporate RCFE residential care facility into the public institution zoning, correct?
It was, it was just looking.
Just the representation of the G-PAC?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so I think that was part of our question back then, is how did this occur? And so you're clarifying now that it was a recommendation of G-PAC, right?
Right, it was something where it was in the zoning, it was something that had been amended during the time that the revisions were made for Kensington. It was evaluating that to incorporate that in that zone general, or that, excuse me, that land use category generally, and City Council went with a different direction.
Okay, so it's, so Placeworks is not, has not demonstrated an opinion, one way or the other, as to whether it is favoring, you know, the RCFE use there, or the project.
No.
Or otherwise.
They've not, they've not had any, you know, opinion on this project, or a review of the project.
All right, and that's all I wanted to check on, is make sure that everybody comes here kind of with an open mind, and no biases, and provides professional services, giving us the most objective viewpoint and everything, so, that's all, thanks.
Councilmember Lowenstein?
That was actually my question, was related to Placeworks. How did you determine that they had no conflict of interest, first of all? And the second thing is, what about the surrounding properties? Because remember, they do own the lot next to the strip mall on Burl.
That's actually part of the Phase One project, so, yeah. And that's not, we're not looking at the change of land use there.
Okay.
And with Placeworks, we, you know, we made sure that Placeworks evaluated to see that they didn't have any, as well, we reached out to Beach Cities Health District, and confirmed that they did not have any conflicts or work that they'd done with them.
Okay, yeah, those are my, that's, the rest of my questions were answered by questions from Mr. Narenheim, but thank you.
Sure.
All right, any members of the public that wants to come down here and speak about this issue? In person? Thank you. Ross Xiaoznow?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Ross Xiaoznow, District Two. Been here quite a while, I'm here to talk as a senior, who lived in Seasons for about seven years. Also have friends at Casa Delas Amigos, and Heritage over in North Redondo. You know, I'm just totally, I'm totally against the reimbursement, because I don't think we should be spending this kind of money anyway. I've talked before about how little this has to do with Redondo Beach seniors. This was sold to us originally as keeping Beach City seniors in their homes. But when you look at these 217 apartments at $12,000 a month, you've got to know that there's going to be very few people from Redondo Beach, Hermosa Beach, and a few from Manhattan Beach. But you look at Redondo Beach, the noise, the traffic, the pollution are going to be here for years. And about 45% of the seniors in the Beach Cities are from Redondo Beach. So if you're looking at Beach City's residents who are going to be living here, we're probably thinking about a few sprinkled in from Manhattan Beach. And if you think I'm exaggerating about Redondo Beach, just listen to these numbers. Seasons, one bedroom, top 1,900, two bedroom, top 2,200. Casa Delas Amigos, top 1450, two bedroom, 1650. And Heritage Point, one bedroom, 2150, two bedroom, 2350. Hardly $12,000 a month. But as I've said before, and I'll say again, there's plenty of things that the Beach Cities Health District could do to help us age gracefully in our houses. And that increases with substance abuse, depression, post-surgery issues, shopping, cleaning, hospice, and maybe even a nurse at these places you could move around. When I talk about these things, people, it wasn't that much money a few years ago, but if you look at inflation, so many seniors now, these little things really add up. And if you've ever seen the way some seniors have hospice at the end of their lives, you would really want to see increases in that. So I've said before, I'd really like to see this brought to Measure DD, brought to the residents of Redondo Beach for a vote. Two other things I just thought of while I was listening to this. One, when does a Redondo Beach City Council get to talk to the Beach Cities Health District and say, hey, when I look at these numbers, it doesn't look like anybody from Redondo Beach is going to live here, even though all the noise and pollution is here, and traffic? And then the other thing that I thought about was, what you guys are talking about, all this reimbursement, is the city councils in Manhattan Beach and Hermosa Beach, are they talking about this? Are they putting money into this? Or are they just going to enjoy this, even though all the crap isn't going to be there? So I hope all this is going to be thought out long before we get to breaking ground on this thing. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Anyone else in person wants to come down and speak to this item?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Members of Council, Staff Eugene Solomon, Redondo Beach. As part of the EIR process, I know it was raised back when this was originally discussed, but with regard to our fire department, and with regard to the additional stresses that will be put on our fire department, as a result of having an additional assisted-living location within our city, for example, with lift assist calls, the staff at assisted-living locations are instructed not to aid or provide medical care to residents. That will result in dispatch of our units to the Beach THD Healthy Living Campus. It will also then put those people out of position, and change the way we might detail our staff, creating additional hours perhaps for our personnel. I know Chief Butler, I had asked this with him in a different forum, there are other ways of requiring revenues for these types of services, and I would hope that that would be examined, the number of calls a typical location receives, the number of calls that Silverado's receiving, the number of calls that we expect, what that'll do to our personnel, what that'll do, impact on our city expenses, and whether or not that cost can be shared by other agencies for us. There are some fire departments around the country that charge these locations $500 per call for non-emergency calls. So it's not just a problem that's specific to us, it's a specific, it's a problem that's specific to these particular types of locations. So something to consider when you're looking at the costs, the EIR, the impact on our services. Thank you.
Some of Xiaoznow, your comments regarding reimbursement, they're putting in an application? So regardless whether, you know, anyone wants it or not, they're putting in an application. And by us reviewing, if we were to review it in the city, we wouldn't be able to cost recovery if it's our own employees, correct?
Even if we could, it goes to like what Mr. Webb was talking about. It, just the workload of that would draw away from so many other of our planned work product.
Right, so by having a reimbursement agreement, we, it's still taxpayer funding money, that's why I went over this contract very, spent good time on it. We spread this out throughout all three Beach Cities. It's not our sole burden, because otherwise, if we do the work, it's going to become our sole burden, which is cost plus all the things we can't get to. So I definitely would want to have that in place, reimbursement in place. Councilmember Obaji?
Oh, I was just going to add that, I think if I understand the process in Redondo now, it's that this project will come to the Planning Commission for whatever entitlements it needs. If it's approved there, then, you know, you'll have an opportunity to speak there. Approved there, then that's it, unless somebody appeals it. If it's either denied, or it's appealed, it'll come up to the City Council. You have another opportunity to be heard here, and we'll hear from the proponents of the project. I'm sure we'll hear from any opponents of the project, and then we can kind of figure out what to do at that point.
Councilmember Lowenstein?
Yeah, to that end, do we have any timeframes here, in terms of how long this is going to take? When the work's going to start, when it'll finish? And perhaps one hearing would be in front of the Planning Commission?
Yeah, so, you know, part of that determination is going to be when they get their application in. I know that, as I mentioned, that they've been working on, you know, the additional information from the pre-application review. I think we gave them the information back in July or August, of what all they're going to comprehensively need to submit for CUP and Planning Commission design review. So once they submit that, and we go through that review process, I think we're looking at, it's not going to be as quick as, okay, well, we'll schedule it next month, because we have to do these reviews, especially of the environmental peer review. So it would probably be somewhere in the six-month range after the submittal that it would go to the Planning Commission.
Okay, and that, and you're not sure when the submittal will take place?
Right, it's, you know, it's technically out of our hands, it's the application that they'll need to submit.
Okay, thank you.
And to the comments that Mr. Solomon made regarding emergency services, we're going to be evaluating the EIR, how it affects Redondo Beach for consistency? And I believe we asked for emergency services to be a part of that?
Yeah, we did, as a municipality, submit our comments on the draft EIR a year and a half ago. So those were addressed in their final EIR, those comments. With that, you know, a big part of our peer review is going to make sure that any environmental, that any components that are a part of this Phase One application, all the different components, just ensuring that all of those had been reviewed and evaluated environmentally through the EIR. So if there was something that, you know, they changed, because they talked about, like for example, height, you know, so if they had changed something there, we'd want to make sure whatever they're submitting had been evaluated in the EIR itself.
Okay, and if we need to react to what Mr. Solomon said regarding, some municipalities have started charging, we have time to react to that and deal with that issue in terms of charging for slip and fall, or by falling and they can't get up calls? In our ordinances or requests?
That's not part of this.
Not?
Well, and also, I'm not familiar with what the particular mechanism is. I'll certainly talk to Chief Butler and see what he was thinking about. But I don't want to say, one, it's not really a part of it, and I don't want to say that it'll be, we have time to do it.
Okay, and it could always be a follow-up, okay?
And what I would add is, I mean, the impact of a project, we're at the consideration of project application phase, you know, before we're actually feeling the impacts of a potential stress on emergency services is quite some time away. So I can hardly imagine a scenario where we wouldn't have ample time to follow up on whatever mechanism might be available to us to recover costs in that regard. It's, we're talking years and years.
I would agree, I just don't know what the mechanism is.
Yeah, right, we'd have to research it.
And I just want to, hey, you guys approved it, there's no impact, all of a sudden now there's an impact, or you guys can't put the C in here or something?
I think I understand the spirit of your question, and it's something that we'll be following up on.
Okay, all right, anyone members of the public, anyone else? Any Zoom comments?
If anyone on Zoom would like to speak, please raise your hand. At this point, I don't have anyone, however, we have four ecomments, and they're all opposed.
And there's an email as well from Mark Nelson, that he sent all of us, you guys can read. It said the city clerk as well, so that'll be added to the record. I was expecting to see Mr. Nelson tonight, all right, is there any motions for this?
Oh, wait a minute, here we go.
A motion to approve?
Yeah.
We have a Zoom comment.
Okay, hold on, there's a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
I mean, not a key comment in Zoom.
A Zoom comment, yep.
That's sorry. Anne Wilson, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We have seen for the very first time in tonight's agenda, three contracts from the city of Redondo Beach for consultants for the controversial project that BCHD is proposing, the Healthy Living Campus. Unfortunately, the public has been blindsided by these contracts, which are suddenly deemed urgent. The actual elected decision-makers in Redondo Beach may have also been. This is fully funded by the applicant developer, BCHD, and now private developer, PMB, and is being conducted before submitting a final project for consideration. The details of the scope of work, information sharing, and communications shows extensive communications between consultants, the BCHD, the city attorney, and planning director. They will then present their findings and results to the city, the Redondo Beach Planning Commission, and City Council hearings, if those happen, on the HLC public, apparently in a vacuum. The details of the agreements reveal that the proposed consultant communications and work projects, products, sorry, are potentially closed to the public starting immediately. The outside legal counsel contract is undefined. Their term is defined as beginning today, through the date, quote, "through the date when all discretionary actions and any related appeals are concluded." So the question is, why contract now? Why before a final project, and the final CUP application is submitted to the city of Redondo Beach Planning Commission? Why rush tonight into agreements with consultants that are on the record as having dense pack urban development stance? We urge you, the City Council members, to take the appropriate time to delve deeply into the hundreds of pages of contractual agreements. Consider their scope of work before making a hasty decision that helps fine-tune and potentially puts a damaging project on the fast track. The public must have transparency with access and input leading up to the CUP final application submittal and hearings. Thank you so much.
Okay, we have also Jeff Gilbert.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, so, Redondo Beach President Jeff Gilbert. I live next door to the BCHD Hospital Project Center, and I agree with Anne Wilson. Much of this planning by BCHD has been deliberately planned to keep the scope of the project in terms of the elder care facility out of the public's recognition. They have talked about all of the peripheral programs that they have involved. Most of those came up within the last year and a half. Some of them, you know, just to justify this as a public project, but it is a commercial development that they want to use with taxpayer money on taxpayer-owned property, even though it's been handed over to BCHD. And to have something like this passed without a lot of scrutiny is wrong. My biggest beef is, I live next door to the hospital district. There's a green space between my home and the hospital district. BCHD wants to destroy that green space and put in a SoCal Edison electric substation with emergency generators, which might be one or two locomotive-sized diesel engines, and fuel tanks containing diesel fuel, up to 10,000 gallons or more, within 100 feet of my living room and bedroom, and a gutter that runs directly out to the ocean. This surprisingly was never in the EIR or in the EIR. I had to ask the director of BCHD to get details of the generator equipment, and he was rather reluctant to give it, but I did get it. And he had to get to his designers to even get this information. Now, why this isn't in the EIR, or given to the city as part of the review, is beyond me. But I really resent the fact that this is being placed, actually, in my front yard, when now it's, when now the current location is behind the hospital, away from residential units. So BCHD has had years of discussion with the public about their design, about their location, and they have done nothing to address these, to quell the anger and resentment of this design. The buildings are too tall, I'm losing my green space, and this is something that BCHD revealed to us almost five years ago, and they agreed not to touch it, and now they are. So to have City Council take a look at something like this, without really getting into the meat of the potatoes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
That concludes public comment.
Okay, anyone else in person that wants to come down and speak? All right, no more lights on? All right, all, motion on the floor to approve as is, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? All right, pass unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item here, something that I've been working on for quite a number of years, and very thankful for this coming back, and I love the way we've integrated this, discussion and possible action regarding the addition of environmental policy advice to the Public Worth Commission's scope of duties. This environmental commission is something I've really fought for, for a long time. I think it's really important, to Councilmember Lowenstein's point from earlier, we need to be developing, setting the standard and developing and building our city in, as an example, moving forward. So, Mr. Smoot, once again, you're popular tonight.
Yeah, excellent, well, thank you, Mayor Protem and Council. So this item was another strategic planning objective to establish an environmental advisory body, or at least look into the options of establishing an environmental advisory body for the city. And so, like most good municipal research projects, we start with what other cities are doing. And so, looking at other cities, these are cities that have found to have no standalone environmental policy body, and I have these ranked by population, just so you can get a feel, and that total is the total number of boards and commissions that these cities have. So you'll see, as we kind of embarked on this project, or on this item, Redondo Beach has a pretty healthy slate of boards and commissions compared to other cities of comparable size.
Or unhealthy.
Wait, hold on, let me, can I clarify something here, and me interrupt?
Yes, sir.
19 commissions?
Boards and commissions.
Boards and commissions?
Yeah.
What are the boards?
How many are active?
Suspension appeal board.
Some of the boards are not that active.
Do you want me to rattle through the list of the nineteen? Okay, I've got them here if you'd like that.
Might take ninety minutes.
Santa Margarita has one.
Yeah.
So, so when it comes to boards, does the police engagement board, is that part of this? Police engagement?
I have the Public Safety Commission on here.
Yeah, not that, but not the community engagement board, I don't believe is part of that list.
No, I tried to stick to formal boards and commissions as opposed to like, didn't count the website subcommittee or things like that, they're sort of ad hoc.
I assume you're counting housing and public financing authority, community financing authority, all those.
Oh.
Yeah, so the agencies, boards and commissions.
Yeah. That's way different, okay, go on, sorry.
Yeah, no problem. And so as you see, the Redondo Beach has nineteen, a lot of the other cities have fewer, and then moved on to cities that do have a standalone environmental policy body. And so you'll see here, these are ranked by population as well. These, you'll see what the names of them are for those various cities. And then also, except for Pasadena and Berkeley, and then Santa Barbara, just by one board and commission, you see that even these cities of generally larger population size have, you know, fewer or comparable number to Redondo Beach of our, of our population. But you can see that, you know, there's a mix of cities that do choose to have standalone body and cities that don't. So as we kind of embarked on this and found, sort of, we have a large number of boards and commissions and the impacts that have, has on staff providing liaison services for those boards and commissions, but also in speaking with the clerk's office, there's not a lot of room left on the city calendar. I think there'd be one regular night that they could establish their meeting, and that sometimes gets taken up by special meetings by other, other boards and commissions. So not a lot of room on the calendar, so we kind of started thinking, okay, what would the options be if we wanted to move towards combining it with an existing board? And so looking at the, you know, overarching theme of environmental advisory responsibilities, there are two boards and commission, two commissions that popped up that from existing mandate perspective seemed to make sense, Planning Commission and Public Works Commission. And just looking at a few things, you know, it's a shared scope that they could both handle, but as we kind of dug deeper into the issue, we found that the existing workload and the existing mandate kind of pushed it more towards that Public Works Commission. That's why those two are in blue, sort of tipped in that direction. And the workload, that's something that as we kind of evaluated since 2020, the Planning Commission has held 26 meetings with an average of 2.5 items per meeting. The Public Works Commission has held 14 meetings with an average of two agenda items per meeting. So just as far as volume of meetings and substantive items on those agendas, it just kind of seemed like it was tacking something on to an already full list for that Planning Commission. So our staff recommendation is going to be to add the environmental advisory responsibilities to the Public Works Commission. And so that's something that is supported by the Public Works Commission. We received a letter as a blue folder item as part of the strategic planning process from the Commission Chair in August. And then we also, on October 24th, presented this to the Public Works Commission for consideration. They unanimously supported adding it to, to their board and commission. And another thing that came up as we were researching this, the establishing ordinance for the Public Works Commission actually has it as a combination of Public Works Commission, the Environmental and Public Utilities Commission, and the Traffic Commission. So there was a separate environmental board in the past that was combined under here. So with that, there is, in the existing ordinance, sort of mandating that this, this commission, no changes would be required for them to assume these responsibilities. But if we wanted to make it more clear, we could bring back an ordinance amending the municipal code, renaming it, or specifically naming specific items or areas of responsibility we would want this policy body to, to take up as part of this. And so that, that concludes my presentation, but I'm obviously here to answer any questions you might have or take down any specific functionalities you would want to go into this.
Yeah, and if I could add to that, Luke, thank you for your work on this and research. But also, we would, we would advise, if the, if the council's ultimately comfortable with this recommendation, that we'd, I think, come back and at minimum rename the commission at some point. So we can add and make it clear to the public that the environmental scope of work is part of their purview. You know, Traffic Commission, I think, is generally presumed with the Public Works Commission, whereas environmental isn't as conspicuous or clear. So we would suggest we do that, and of course, if you would like, we could elaborate in the ordinance on what environmental policy matters, what that means, and sort of what that review could look like. But at minimum, I think we, we at least update the name if this is a recommendation the council ultimately supports. And as mentioned, the commission was, was, I think, very, very willing to take on this role if that's the, the will of council.
Thank you, great overview, yeah. I fully support renaming the commission, adding this to the commission and add it and renaming it, adding that in there so people understand what they're getting into. If you just say Public Works, it doesn't really, at all. And I also support outlining some of the things, specifically what they would be talking about, policies, whether it's starting paints and solvents and, you know, procedures and tools and whatever, you know, we go down the path of, we definitely, I think we should be putting it in there so they have a defined scope. I don't want them to go without a scope, then what are we supposed to talk here about the environment?
Yeah, and one thing, as, as we've discussed this, it's not going to be like development related EIR type things. It would be more single use plastic bans, straw policies, you know, we could, the tree ordinance that's now under review by the city attorney's office, things like that, where they would have an opportunity to apply or find opportunities that we could improve, you know, our policies or how we're moving forward as a city in general on policy items as opposed to, like I said, not development related.
And there's synergy here, right? The Public Works Commission already advises as it pertains to solid waste handling and waste disposal services, which is a big part of environmental impact these days from a municipal standpoint. There's overlap there, the organics programs, the, the plastic information and outreach campaigns to storm water and PDS requirements that we have for our MS4 permit obviously fall to the Public Works Commission. So there's quite a bit of overlap as it pertains to public environmental policy. I think about the city's fleet vehicle purchasing policies. Ultimately, how we build out our infrastructure to bring about more charging stations and things of that nature. So the Public Works Commission feels like a really natural fit, candidly, just given their backdrop. And I think it makes a lot of sense for us to have them take this on more officially.
Okay, Councilmember Baji?
Sure, so thank you, Mr. Smoot, for this report. I would favor in renaming it the Public Works and Sustainability Commission. I think sustainability really hits the heart at what's important to us, more so even than environmental alone. Because, for example, in erecting a new playground, think about how do we make it sustainable? How do we make it last? Right now, our playgrounds, when they're, you know, they come in fresh after years of getting sun bleached, they essentially fade away, and the question's, well, it's still a functional playground. Maybe can we just repaint it or something like that? Just, so Public Works is constantly thinking about how are we going to make things last without rebuilding or taking away trashing and reconstructing. And I do see that actually in section, municipal code, RBMC, code section 2-9403, the powers and duties do specifically say that where any powers and duties are assigned to either the Environmental and Public Utilities Commission or the Traffic Commission, by any provision of this code, they basically shall be provided, assigned to the Public Works Commission. So, and maybe we add a subparagraph in there, a section B, to replace that or push that down to C, that says that their power and duty shall include looking at solutions to, to city problems or development and advancement through a sustainable, environmentally sustainable lens, and keeping that at the forefront of their minds as they make any decision related to the city. So that's what I favor.
And as we think about the, the title, do we want, it seems like the word environmental is important in there. I heard you say sustainability, you say environmental sustainability, or you just want?
I wasn't going to make it that long, I was just going to say Public Works and Sustainability Commission. I don't know what sustainability, you know, means without environmental sustainability, but if somebody wanted it to be environmentally sustainable, then by all means, go for it.
I, I would agree with the sustainability because it's far more than just the environment. We want to create an environment or build a city that is sustainable over the long term. For instance, you know, we don't want to use certain products that are in our parks that are bad for the environment, right, from an environmental standpoint.
Yeah, I certainly understand what it means. I think the key is whether or not we think the community fully understands that this, this council has a commission that advises on environmental policy. And if, if we build it out under the powers and duties and make it abundantly clear that that's what we're looking at when we talk sustainability, I think that's fine. I just want to make sure we're sending that message through that title.
That's why we're on a paragraph on it in the, in the powers and duties.
Yeah, I mean, I think sustainability to me has a lot more than just environment in it.
It does.
So, Councilmember Orvath?
Yeah, very quick, so I do support this. But I just want to reiterate something that I've mentioned for multiple years, especially at strategic planning, in that I truly believe that all our advisory committees should really be looking at the, the environmental sustainability policies that the council has put in place and be using those as, as a baseline for helping make decisions and recommendations to the council. So whether we have a lead agency, in this case, the Public Works Committee, that, that has the title, I truly believe all the committees and commissions should really have that as a foundational staple for how they come about in making their recommendations to the council.
Okay, anyone members of the public? Come down and speak to this, anyone? All right, anyone members on Zoom?
No members from Zoom, I have three public comments from ecomment and two support and one oppose.
One oppose, I did not see that, let me look at it real quick. Oh, got it, okay. All right, is there anyone that wants to speak anymore to this? Anyone, going once?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, and I will second that as long as we include.
Direction, yeah, direction to come back with an updated, an ordinance that would update the, the scope of duties and incorporate the revised title.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, pass unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up, item N5?
Yes.
Moving right along. So this is the ballot measures, adding measures to the March 7th, 2023 election?
Yes. So, okay.
Ms. Menzano?
So, from last week's meeting, to bring back the ballot questions and also for this item. And so we have three ballot questions, one of them, I'll speak to you a little bit later, but I wanted you to review the question. And if you have any issues, the one for, and then the one for section 19. We have 74 words. And so I know that there, I got a blue folder item related to the wording of, and not more than five years between amendments, to not, was, was requested to put in not less than five years.
Not less, yeah.
So, so that's one question. The other thing is, for this one question, the proposed charter amendment would have to be removed because that's over 74 words, unless you want to remove of city charter. So that's another question, it's up to, to the city council to decide.
Wait, sit, sit, wait.
So for the first one, so let me see, I think I might actually have it on here.
I thought it was, oh, this is, what's it called?
So this one here, let me get that on there. There we go, let me bring that up a little bit further. There we go, this measure right here, the first one, proposed charter amendment. I have to remove that because otherwise I have 74. But again, I can remove of city charter, and then I can keep proposed charter amendment. So you'll, so.
Of city, so what would you be changing? Shall sections 19, 19.1, 19.7, 19.9 of?
Stays, and then it would just say Article 19.
Article 19.
Correct, and then that way I can keep proposed charter amendment there.
Okay, I would agree to that.
Can you put Article 19 in the title?
Excuse me?
Can you put Article 19 in the title?
You mean just move it there?
Could you say proposed charter Article 19 amendment?
Sure.
As part of the title?
Sure.
Is that, does that?
But then I would have to take of charter, city charter Article 19.
Right, right, you remove it from there, so now you've lost.
Yeah, I could do, sure.
Proposed charter Article 19 amendment, shall public works contracts competitive bidding, is that how it's going to read?
No, it still, it still says shall sections 19, 19.1, 19.7, and 19.9 for public works contracts, competitive bidding, when not required, progress payments. Those are the titles for each of those sections.
Okay.
This seems pretty clear, I don't know.
And then my question would be also where it says, the second where it says, and not more than five years between amendments, do you want that, and not less?
Well.
I think that was the intent, right, of the recommend, recommending body.
Right, and not less than five years between amendments, that was exactly, that was the intent.
Okay, so then my question is, I assume that's not changing this part, this is the actual charter change.
No more frequently than five years, not, okay, so.
Can we, you know, can I get either Rolf or Mr. Solomon down here? Mr. Strassenberg?
This was hard to put 75 words.
Yeah.
Based on.
All right, gentlemen, so introduce yourselves real quick for everyone to know who you are.
Rolf Strassenberg, Chair of the Charter Review Advisory Committee.
Jane Solomon, Vice Chair of the Charter Review Committee.
Thank you, sir. Sirs, can you just talk to, real quick, do not less than five years between amendments or not more than five years between amendments?
Yes, the wordsmithing that was proposed to go into it was to standard the word limit threshold. The meaning that's written into the charter is that there has to be five years span before another update can happen. So both are correct, they're just worded differently to eliminate just a couple of words. I think it was 78 versus 75 is where we were at.
Correct.
So the not less than in the amendment measure language would be the correct way to align it with the actual charter language.
This is the question, right, the question is what you want to change.
The question, yeah.
Only.
Thank you, or for true, that is the, the ballot question.
Ballot question, not less than, can we go to the second one, please?
This is the charter that needs to be, that is requested to be amended, so the bold.
And each of the above dollar amounts.
If I may, the intent of the, having it amended no more frequently than five years was in response to the last time this appeared on the ballot. It was perceived as a blank check, in finger quotes, to the city council to increase the amounts. So it was thought that there should be some guardrails included in the amendment. That's why you see the super majority in order to amend it, and that's why it was requested that if, when it was built in to have the increases, that they be done no more than every five years. To communicate the idea that this would not be something that would be a blank check or frequently amended to the number.
Okay.
So this, this is, this is correct, what's written here, correct?
As it appears on the screen now, no more frequently than five years since last amended is how the report came into the council and how the motion was made at the Charter Review Committee.
Yes, sir.
Just stylistic right here, amendments, four fifths, can we change that from apostrophe S to THS? And can you eliminate the word dollar, sorry, amount? That doesn't need to be there, each of the above dollar limits by no more than 25, and there should be a hyphen between 20 and 5%. Do we get that, Madam Clerk?
Four fifths vote, what was the?
Eliminate the word amount, above dollar amount, doesn't need to be there. And 25%, there should be a hyphen between 20 and 5.
That works for me. It's four fifths, is there a hyphen between four and fifths?
Oh, yeah, I didn't, I wasn't even reading that part, but yeah, hyphen between four and fifths, too.
Where, what do you?
The first.
First.
Oh, four, that thing, four dash fifth, yes.
Okay.
Add hyphen. Add hyphen.
That's it, for me.
Okay.
Yeah, my only, in thinking about this, I would offer, would it come across as confusing now that the question is written differently from the actual amendment? If you don't think so, I'm fine with that. They, to me, they're the same thing.
I didn't quite hear you on that.
Would the way that they're written slightly different regarding the five years, would the "no less than five years" appear to be conflicting in any way with the way the actual charter change is written?
Should be.
I think that's what generated this. I'm okay with it.
To me, the message conveyed by the ballot language is that it would be amended at least every five years, rather than "no more frequently than five years."
I'm a little confused when I read it, "not more than five years."
It's going to be "not less than five years."
Yeah, it needs to be "not less than five years." The whole idea is you want a five-year span to occur.
Yep.
It could happen at year six, year seven.
We need to change that.
Another five years since that.
Yep, we need to change that.
No less than five years between amendments.
No less?
Yeah, no less than.
Question.
Hold on, let me make sure. Did you get that?
Yeah, I got that.
Okay.
That should work for working.
Right, right. No, that's.
That makes more sense to me. When I read it right now, the way it is, I'm like, what? No, that's making sense.
No, not less. Okay. And then the written, or the charter part is fine the way it is. Okay.
You're saying if the charter, the ballot question is different than the actual charter amendment?
Right, because it says "not less," no.
Because, you know, the charter, the question on the ballot omits the word "frequently."
But it is always summarized. I mean, it's got to be summarized to a degree.
I think it's a difference without a distinction.
Yeah, we have one that says "no more," and now we have one that says "no less."
Yeah, no, I understand your concern. I had the same in looking at it. Because "no more frequently than" just reads differently, and somebody could look at it as if, you know, we've made a mistake and it's confusing.
So should we change that to match it up? Is that what you're asking for, essentially? All right, so that would just say, "and no less frequently than five years between amendments."
In the charter portion?
Yeah, "and no less frequently," they're basically copying the same language that we have there after the comma, after the 25% comma.
Mr. Webb.
It's, it's theirs. I'm not part of this process. But "no less frequently" would be, you have to do it at least every five years. And the intent of the committee was to have it. And I think it's because, can you put the ballot title on? Because I've got the section in front of me. So if you're put, so you could put, and you're reading "no less than," so you could put, "and no less than five years since last amended." So if you use that language in there, you could use that language in the charter.
Right, so what I'm just trying to say is, let's copy what's taken from the ballot language.
You could do that. So instead of saying. Instead of saying "no more frequently than five years since last amended," you could put "and no less than five years." Now, I don't, I think it's a distinction without a difference, and you have a limit that you don't have here, but it's up to you to write the ballot question.
And "no less than five years between amendments."
Yes, let's do that.
That's what we wanted to have on the ballot language and copied in the ordinance.
You guys agree to that?
Yeah, just a brief background of that. We had discussion on that evening, the ballot language. And what we ended up doing is, the way you read it that evening that the committee approved and voted on was the language that we put in.
That was part of the report and the strike through of the actual charter amendment, rather than the question.
And we didn't want to deviate from what was actually approved, perfectly legitimate now at the council level, and in favor of doing that. At that time, there was a reason we did do it that way.
Yeah, it makes sense. Okay.
Okay, so we're going to have "and no less than five years between amendments" for the question, and then also for.
And I think that would clear up any distinction without a difference, but it could confuse people.
It could very well confuse people.
Don't want to create confusion.
No.
Once there's no lasted.
Just reading, I know what you guys were trying to do, and by reading the question, I was confused. I knew what you were doing.
Madam Clerk, you're just confirming that you're going to put that into the ordinance as well, right?
Correct.
Right, excellent. Thanks.
Okay, next measure. So I thought we gave direction to get, put them all in the one. Is it that we can't put it all in one because they, single source entity, single source ballot measure?
Single subject. It would put a potential risk. It's going to be really hard to explain that all when you're taking different charter sections. And so it's not to say you can't, but now go through the exercise and squeeze the second measure into the.
Totally get it.
It's going to be virtually difficult to do. So that's the idea.
And not really convincing to approve.
Well, yeah, yeah. So that's the reason why, potential challenge.
I got it. I have totally been through this before, so I get it.
Remove surprise materials, property issues.
And did you decide to add the word "Article 19" to the bold title?
Correct, so I'll say proposed charter Article 19 amendment. I will remove "of city charter Article 19."
And if you're going to do that for consistency's sake, do you want to do that for the next one, too?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do that. The other ones have plenty of. Yes?
A person.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I guess my concern with the second ballot measure is, a person reading that, including myself right now, has no, might have no idea what that achieves, right?
Right, well, that's the campaign and the ballot.
I mean, but we do have the word count to be able to, you know, so as to, or to allow the city to explain a little bit, right?
Do we need to? You're going to make it more, the why can be done in the ballot arguments in favor of. The question just needs to be a simple question, right? You're not explaining why.
But what does this achieve? Just curious again. I know we had to explain before.
The list of things that can be approved.
And it helps us, it allows for us to pay via contract. And in this case, prepay for items. In a sense, we can order streetlight poles or other things on an advanced basis, as opposed to having to wait until the item has been delivered or rendered. So right now, the charter locks us up and prevents us from putting deposits down on large equipment or materials because of that statement "actually delivered or rendered." We're really getting rid of that phrase "actually delivered or rendered." And the simplistic way to do that is to say, well, here's what we owe by procurement, by contract.
And that's an issue that comes up when we're negotiating a lot of contracts because they're not used to getting no payment.
Subordinate clause, you know, legally due, comma, question, comma, thereby allowing the city to pay deposits on purchases. Can we say that? Is that a fair statement of what it would be doing?
That's accurate.
All right. I mean, and that seems like something that anybody would say, oh, yeah, should be able to pay a deposit on a purchase, right?
Yeah, as needed.
All our vendors think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a surprise issue for them. Ms. Menzano?
Can you repeat that, please?
Yeah, thereby allowing or permitting, which one do you guys want to use?
Permitting.
Permitting, thereby permitting the city to pay deposits on purchases.
Yeah.
And he said "amount is legally due" or "amount legally due"? I don't remember "is" being in there.
You took it right off, so.
I got to go back to the, you got to go back to the full statement. Chart, the change itself?
Well, I think the word "is" was in there. It was part of a longer clause that the Charter Committee originally proposed, which was.
Oh, sorry, 20.
It had like.
20.1.
There we go.
Clause that said pursuant to.
Sub item. It was referring to an amount.
Well, no.
You have an extra comma there, Madam Clerk.
Things could be legally due.
Oh, yeah, that the amount is, there's a full sentence there that signifies themselves that the amount is legally due. Oh, yeah, okay, so it's the pre. Yeah. Madam Clerk, you have an extra comma there after rendered.
Oh, yeah, we called that out last time.
So am I adding the sentence to this, or am I changing the whole thing?
No, I don't need to add it. No, you don't need to add it.
Just the ballot question.
Correct, no, the ballot question.
Yeah.
So I'm replacing, so I'm going to say, "shall section 20.1 approval of demands be amended to allow, allowing permits, the city to?"
It's either allow or permit.
Permit.
I think they were saying.
Yeah.
Permit the city.
Thereby permitting the city.
Permitting the city to pay deposit on purchases, right? Instead, and so the.
Deposits on purchases.
Deposits on purchases, okay.
Okay, but, and then somebody was calling out here on section 20.1 of Exhibit B that you have two commas.
After the strikeout, you ran the last word for rendered, the fourth sentence down.
I don't see a comma here. It's on the question.
No, no, right there.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
It just looks like the strike through didn't cover the original comma.
Yep.
Oh, I see. Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
So for the question, that's where I want to make sure.
Yeah.
So I'm removing everything after amended? Or am I adding this question? That's what I'm trying to understand.
Legally due, there's a quotation mark, and then it's going to be comma, thereby permitting the city to pay deposits on purchases.
Okay.
Question mark.
Got it. That should be plenty of words. There, okay. So, that is for that one. And then we have this last one, gender neutral language.
That's fine.
Okay.
Simple as it gets.
Yep.
Yep, okay.
Although for consistency, I would still put the section of the charter.
What's the whole, the whole charter, so.
Oh, yeah, okay. Never mind.
Okay.
You could say all articles.
If I may.
It's not all articles. There's, I've, at the, just certain articles.
Yeah.
Simple's good.
Yeah, keep it simple.
If I may, there were a couple of typos in that document that was the blue folder item from the committee meeting. So that should be checked for typographical errors. There were some word usage that wasn't quite right.
You're talking about regarding the general neutral?
General neutral, yes.
Okay, yeah, we went through it.
Okay.
Yeah, because we wanted to make sure it's exactly what the charter says.
Yes, in the actual language that was proposed, there were some errors.
You said "blue folder item"? There was nothing on blue folder N5.
It's not a blue folder item.
There's a blue folder for the committee.
Oh.
That was, we referred to it as the blue folder item when Eleanor was asked to attach that to it. Not a blue folder item tonight.
So is this in the packet?
I have no idea, but the council should be voting on the actual language.
Well, no, those, those were just charter language, but it wasn't changed. It wasn't, it wasn't one where it was supposed to be striked out. Those are the ones I saw.
Okay, there was a strikeout for the gender neutral.
What is before us is this amendment language, so we got to prove this essentially to make sure that, that this has.
It's at C, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so let's.
I'm concerned that what you voted to put on the ballot last meeting is apparently not what you should be putting on the ballot. And the clerk can't fix that after the fact and then still put it on the ballot. So if it needs to be fixed, you should have this come back on December 6 so that you can approve the actual amendment that's going to the voters.
So what we approved last time was not the actual correct language? It was in the blue folder last time?
The last, okay, so the full charter was in the last item, right? So we went, I went through it, and that, since you approved that, that's what I took. So the only issues that I had were because it didn't come from the charter correctly, but it wasn't to change it. It wasn't a general neutral issue.
But was the issue, there was a spelling mistake somewhere or spelling?
So like there was a line missing.
So there are no substantive changes?
What wasn't related to changes to the charter of the general neutral? It was just accidentally not brought over correctly.
Basically, if they copied from PDF to a Word document.
So formatting issue, not a charter language change issue. Got it. Okay.
Well, if it's got stuff in there that's not supposed to be in there, that's not a formatting error. So I, and maybe I'm mishearing it.
No, the words are the same. Just this, it was. All right.
Okay, then that's fine. If it's formatting, then.
Yeah.
There's errors in words, folks.
See, so I'm hearing a different.
I'm hearing a different thing now.
Then I can bring it back for December 6.
The council is the only one that can put this on the agenda.
And double check it. And, but I just put in the 20, I think it's 26 sections of what was changed.
Yep, I saw that.
On Exhibit C, and they're redlined, simple redline, too, so you can tell where the changes were made.
Right.
Even 8.3, there was one that I recall.
Let's see, 8.3.
8.3, every subsection, every mention of he is changed out, the mayor is substituted in.
So again, we can bring it back next week.
Okay.
I mean, next meeting, 12.6.
It's going to be a charter night.
Yep.
Better get it right. Third time's a charm.
So I will bring back that one.
Maybe the Charter Commission members can stay home on that.
Don't eat too much turkey and get tired.
Okay, so the next one, which is not on this resolution, however, we have, is the mayor presiding office. And let me see, I can, oh, this is where.
So where did that come from?
Which, which one? What do you mean? So there was six.
8.3A.
Right, 8.3, correct. So there was six charter amendments. And so this was five, and then this one's the mayor presiding officer, which is related to, no, it's 8.3C. So I have it on this based on the report that the Charter Committee gave us. And on C, it says, "when the city council has authorized the city manager or other officer or other employee to approve and sign a written contract"
Right.
"on behalf of the city." So the issue is.
The clerk and I read this differently. I'm reading off the, the actual language. She was reading off the report.
Right.
I read it as only applying to signed contracts. She read some of the report as potentially applying to resolutions and ordinances, and that would be a major change because it would provide an end run to an unfriendly council to the mayor beyond the veto power. Because he can, or she can only veto a resolution or an ordinance when it's presented to him or her for signature. And if a council could say, hey, we assign the signature to someone else. I don't think that was the intent, but that was the, we wanted clarification.
Right, exactly.
What do we?
So this would be a separate ballot item. We would need to direct you to get a question for and prepare all the documentation for. I'd be in favor of that.
I just want to make sure, I just want the clarification, isn't it?
That it only pertains to signing contracts. That's my impression. That was our conversation.
That was my impression.
Discussion. What we did, though, in, where we wrote it out in, in Number 2, where it says ordinance resolution or other action, the city council, I take the ownership of the poor writing that. It should either say by ordinance resolution or other action that the city council may, or the intent is that the city council can do this by ordinance, by resolution, or other means, which is, it could be within an individual thing that you vote as a council that the mayor doesn't have to sign this one.
Right, so if you look at, and it's the reason we want a clarification, if you look at discussion and proposed action number two, I can certainly understand why the clerk said, hey, this applies to ordinance resolution or other. I can certainly understand why the clerk said, hey, this applies to ordinance resolution or other action. Well, that's a very different thing, because it's an end run around a potential veto than allowing someone to sign a contract, so we figured what, rather than us deciding it in the back, it's like, let's have everyone weigh in on what I think we all agree is the intent. And the language in the proposed charter change is correct for that intent, just the explanation for number two is.
I wrote number two poorly, and I will own that, if you add the word by at the very beginning, it cleans it up.
And we don't even need it.
You don't need it, but that helps the understanding, I think is a great point that you caught, because it could have been something.
Right, because some of the, the way of getting some of the question is by using some of that, and when that said ordinance and resolution, I'm like, wait a minute, it's not clear.
Okay, so maybe just for council purposes here, let's bring them back to what is, I think the question.
We don't have a title.
Yeah, so we've got to create a title for the next meeting.
Right.
Right, yeah. The question is making sure you're, they're still all comfortable with that.
No, we just needed clarification, is this only gonna, was your understanding, was their understanding, notwithstanding any other language that only applies to contract, and if, if everyone agrees, then she has direction.
It's in my note here from last time at 12:14 AM. 11:01, not ordinances and resolutions.
Okay.
It's just contracts.
Just contracts. Just contracts, yeah. Yeah, and it's in my second note exactly that, so yeah, that is correct, so I will make a motion to, start off with this one, because I didn't write it down, sorry.
All right, just, yeah, just a reminder, thank you, go for it.
To approve, what item is this number, 8.3, to come back as a charter amendment, come back with a ballot title and summary, question?
Not a summary, but charter question.
Question, question, but we need still, are still gonna need a question, well, question, arguments pro, to sign arguments pro and against.
Resolution for arguments pro and against.
Yep, resolution of pro and against. And, and a, in, what do you call that again, a?
Independent analysis.
Independent analysis. Impartial analysis, there you go, impartial analysis of the item.
And then we'll also bring back the general neutral.
Yeah, that's the first one, so then come back with these requested changes on, let's open this up here, right, about short, long.
On the amendments to article 19.
Article, yeah.
For public works contracts as discussed, and the amendments to section 20.1 as to the approval of demands.
And the addition of the question, the verbiage of the question.
Right, with, with the amendments discussed.
As well as 8.3, right?
Advance the gender neutral language to the next step, it needs to go to a signed letter.
And we need to update the resolution, or not the ordinance as well, under 19? Did we do that on there, or no?
There's no ordinances, so.
Not the ordinance?
The language for consistency's sake, right?
Right.
Right, I have that, yeah, in the charter, I see.
You've got 8.3, you've got this question coming back very clearly in the motion, correct?
Eight.
Yes, and this.
Eight is coming back to us in December, right?
In December, first meeting in December, which is December 6th.
December 6th, we had, that has to be the last day, so.
Yep.
All right.
And then.
I second your motion as amended.
Thank you, sir. And then we, then at that point in time, we do the ballot arguments pro and against. Whether we do the resolutions, we'll sign people and do what we need to do.
We can approve this one, and then right after that, I have the rebuttals, arguments, and impartial analysis for the two that you have here.
Okay.
Got it. Okay.
Perfect. All right, any members of the public want to come down and talk about this delicious sausage that we just made? Nice and spicy.
Yeah.
Again, reconstituted. Sure, really, come on, it's early, folks, it's only 8:51 PM, we're, we're moving. I got you, all right.
I have no attendees for Zoom and no comments on this item.
Okay.
No ecomments?
No ecomments.
First of all, I just want to thank Chair Stretzenberg and Vice Chair Solomon for all this hard work and effort. I know you guys, I'm sure you guys have spent a lot of time here going back and forth, it's, it's a lot of volunteering time. I know how much time this is, so thank you very much on everything that you do on this, this is well appreciated, the finite details, commas, specific words do make a big difference, and this is a, a long time, 20, 30, 40, 50 years, you know, who knows if they ever touch it again? Uh, yeah, founding, founding members. Okay, uh, yes, sir.
Quick comment, also want to thank former council member Pinsler for coming down last week and freeing the school district board from the shackles of historical punishment.
They're talking about it.
It hasn't been done yet.
Got it, right, right, or at least initiating, getting the wheels rolling on it, yes.
So before we vote, I guess we're voting on this, and then next week, so we don't have any agenda, next week we're coming back with the other items and the contracts for the lawyer, legal department, I guess, or the attorney is not here. That's going to be coming back in December 6th for that.
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
The charter stuff.
Yeah, certainly in December, yeah.
Oh, there it is. The, December 6th, for the outside counsel, the choices that we have to move forward.
Well, the direction was for the city manager to select someone, he's given me a firm name, I have to see if they're open to the idea.
Okay. Perfect. All right.
So we're going to approve this resolution, then we have the next one. This, the arguments rebuttals, I just want you to.
Okay, so approving this resolution, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, passes unanimously, thank you.
Okay, adopt by title only resolution number CC-2211-105. A resolution city council Redondo Beach, California ordering the submission of the qualified electors of the city of certain measures relating to amendment amending charter sections 19, 19.1, 19.7, 19.9, and 20.1 for election to be held on Tuesday, March 7, 2023, as called by resolution number 2210-079 as amended.
All right, so for this resolution, the second motion will be here, we need to get arguments for and against on this, correct?
Correct, and then the measure designations.
And measure designations, okay, so.
And then also just wanted to let you know that the two questions will be exactly as you just approved.
Updated.
And the third one will be removed to go to the December 6th meeting, just so.
So we have three measures here, we can assign up to three letters for these. Do you have any proposals?
I would say use, can, can you use letters and digits, or?
Like A1?
Can you go to like CA Charter Amendment 1, CA 2, CA for any of the charter amendments?
You could do that, sure. Pretty flexible since we're the one running the election.
That would be my recommendation.
Charter Amendment 1, Charter Amendment 2, Charter Amendment 3.
There's gonna be a bunch of them, and they're all charter amendments, so.
Right down the line, and that's separate from the CT1, kind of his tax, all right.
And everybody loves CA.
See. Except for those that are moving to Texas.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's right, so we'll do that, and we got to choose candidates, so, or two people to write this.
Mr. Saman just came back into the room.
He's not volunteering. Mr. Solomon, can I, can I volunteer you to, to write this ballot argument? I don't want to push this off of Stretzenberg because he did the last one. Kids, you're here.
If you're asking for 19, and, are you asking for all of them, or?
Uh, no, okay, yeah, night, the ballot, the business ones, so 19 and 20.
I'd be happy to do that, it kind of closes a loop for me.
Yeah.
Something that I started working on with the city manager almost six years ago now, so I, I would be grateful to do that, close a loop and provide the information.
Awesome, fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so what do you want to do for gender neutrality portion of the ballot, does anyone want to volunteer?
Mr. Kent Eddy.
Ladies?
Ladies.
Ladies, please.
Mr. Craig.
Come on. Get your name on the ballot, get the write this, get some signatures, meet some people.
Mr. Craig volunteered to do the gender neutral ballot statement.
All right, Mr. Wayne Craig, you're. All right, so I'll make a motion to.
Before, I'm sorry, just, so you want like CA 1, CA 2, you want it in section 19 is CA 1, section 20.1 CA 2, the mayor's CA, uh, which one do you want, three or four, which one for gender?
CA, gender will be CA 3, and then the mayor will be the CA 4, because we don't have that one yet technically speaking, just in case if it doesn't, if something goes wildly wrong.
But just, okay, great, just to make sure so that I know which ones they're doing.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve resolution CC-2211-106 with the updated language from the conversation that we just had, motion that was passed, designate the section, amendment 19, section to CA 1, measure 20 is CA 2, gender neutral, CA 3, and assign commissioner and charter, charter commissioner, Solomon, to do items 19 and 20 as arguments in favor of. And then Mr. Wayne Craig, you said you wanted to do the charter amendment for the gender neutral action, so in proponents. And we are going to leave the opponents separate and out, first come, first served, unless someone here on the council wants to say, volunteer their hand.
What about the mayor?
Uh, the mayor one we'll deal with next week, or on December 6th, because we don't have that resolution in front of us yet. So, a second for that, you got seconded, right?
Sorry, what was your, what was your, what are you seeking a second for?
So the resolution for arguments.
Yes.
And letters, perfect. All right, anyone want to come down and speak to this motion? Anyone on Zoom want to speak to this motion? All right, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, fantastic.
Okay, adopt by title only resolution number CC-2211-106. A resolution city council Redondo Beach, California setting priorities for the filing of written arguments, rebuttals, and directing the city attorney to prepare impartial analysis regarding certain measures be submitted to the general municipal election ballot held on Tuesday, March 7, 2023, as called by resolution number CC-2010, 2210-079, as amended, thank you.
As amended, thank you. All right, we are not skipping over the item, we are always skipping over with the city manager items.
Just one, one item to report tonight, we're doing this a little differently this year. Historically, the city employee of the year has been announced as part of the annual chamber dinner. This year, it's a luncheon, it's occurring on Thursday, and, but we're not doing it as a reveal as we've done in the past, so the, this year's winner is, knows that he's receiving this award, and I wanted to let the mayor and council know this evening that Andy Winji, our city engineer, will be this year's city employee of the year, so. Very well deserved, and we'll be saying some nice things about Andy at the luncheon on Thursday, but he's done a tremendous job for us, and we're, we're happy to recognize him.
Triple duty.
Absolutely tremendous job, and as only due to the fact that we don't want to lose you, so I'm going to give you even more accolades. Thank you, sir, no, seriously, Andrew, and Andy is, does a great job. Uh, all right, so that leaves us to mayor and council referrals to staff, council member Lowenstein.
Uh, no, thank you.
Uh, council member Horvath. Council member Obaji.
Just two. I wonder, can we have a proclamation, mayoral proclamation for Andy Winji, the next time we come to council, perhaps, just to give him a little roast?
Uh, yeah, we could figure something out like that, yeah, we'll find the right night for it, but yeah, we can do it in December.
Sure, awesome, and then the next, the next thing more substantive that I want to refer, actually I got a call from a resident complaining about conditions at, at her apartment rental, and I know that we wanted to go easy on code enforcement in the residential zones, but I think that apartments are a different beast because the landowners have a pocket, whereas the renters who are harmed by dilapidation or just poor, poor maintenance, you know, don't really have the resources to take action on it. And so I would like to have at some point come back staff recommendations as to what we could do to protect Redondo Beach renters, who are 49% of our population. So protect them from mold, dry rot, chipping, peeling paint, rusting railings, unstable railings, gates, unkept landscaping, trash, et cetera.
Okay, that's a.
And maybe, maybe consideration or historical discussion as to whether there's ever been a rent stabilization ordinance in the city.
So we, we could have a generic discussion regarding policies pertaining to protection of renters. That is a pretty loaded subject, though, that isn't, that's not a quick research project, that's a pretty weighty issue, so.
Well, I guess, can we, can we just have a meeting maybe with no staff report, but just based on my referrals, so we can discuss it?
Kind of a, just a high level policy conversation with your own research, yeah, I mean, if you'd like, we can do that, maybe maybe Jan, January, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I, I didn't see anything when I looked at the municipal code and I searched, I didn't see any regulation of the apartment industry in Redondo Beach. Is that accurate or not?
Yeah, I, I haven't researched it.
None of rent, or it, if it's a nuisance, it's a nuisance, so.
Okay.
And it's a question, again, the age old question, enforcement versus ordinance, so.
Right, okay.
I, I do have one other thing, I kept waiting for maybe a misunderstanding, but you made a referral to closed session about challenging RENA based on equal protection, I think you'd wanted to change that to a different, different grounds.
Well, I know that we can't sue this, I recall this now, can't sue this, they.
Keep going, I'll.
Federal court, I think under the 11th Amendment, but in any event.
You want, it's state court.
I do want to, I do want to challenge the RENA under federal law, I don't care what forum it's in, but under federal law, using equal protection, I think due, due process, and or, basically whatever other theories, federal constitutional theories we could apply.
Okay, and I just wanted to make certain that was okay, because it was different than the motion, you'd sent me an email, and I was waiting for you to make it, since you haven't made it, I just thought.
I'll second that.
I'd remind you.
I'll second that, and.
How about that, how about the discussion, renters discussion?
Oh.
You up for that?
Oh, we didn't even vote on that, sorry, we didn't get a second on that.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor on the renters discussion?
Aye.
I'll second that motion regarding RENA numbers, and here's why, there are active people actively out there searching for cities and information regarding challenging the RENA numbers and suing the state, so I have to get you in contact with the folks that are looking to do that.
Well, I, I am in contact with.
Are the folks looking to do that?
Yeah, so, no, no, we, we have a lawsuit that's on appeal, but the firm.
Not that one.
I know, it's a firm has a separate one, and have always reached out to the associate that's representing us on a different lawsuit to discuss the, the basis of that lawsuit. I don't think it's under federal law, so it may be different than this, so if you could expand your motion to.
Sure, so look, look at all viable challenges.
Okay.
To RENA, but it occurs to me that federal law is where we should be looking, because I understand that basically the courts have found that the legislature didn't intend for there to be judicial process, that in of itself seems unconstitutional to me.
And I will, I will, I will second that, continue to second that, with adding the, what Holly was saying, exactly what Holly, Dr. Osborne was saying. She, there is that movement afoot, they had, did an audit of the numbers and include the audit of the numbers, because there are some significant issues in there that we could include, and that's basically what they were looking at doing the lawsuit on.
Basically, any, any basis to, to go after RENA in a way that we have not already.
Okay, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Anyone who posts? Passed unanimously?
I'm going to abstain on that.
Abstaining, all right. 401, all right, anything else? Uh, council member Emi.
No, thank you.
I did not have anything, I don't think you answered my question regarding coming back in December 6th, the city attorney, or city manager regarding the charter illegal outside counsel for, for the charter, charter review committee?
I did answer your question, so the motion. I did answer your question. So, um, the motion, um, the city manager gave me, you talked about existing firms. I, as I mentioned last week, Richard Watson doesn't want to do it. Uh, city manager mentioned a firm that we used to do. We used to use, uh, we'll have to update our MOU. So I don't know if that will be done by December 6. And as the city manager said, it should be done in December or we'll have to, they say, no, we'll have to, to look for a different firm.
So do we, should we update that direction now with, uh, at the end of the meeting here with, uh, do you need, uh, a larger breadth of qualifications and firms, not, not just on, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it depends on what we're, how quickly we're trying to move and what we're ultimately trying to accomplish here. It seems to me the spirit of this is to have, to bring about a firm that would advise the charter review committee and ultimately the council on matters pertaining to this one particular issue that, that Mike has, has stated he needs to recuse himself on. Selecting that firm, I think there still is some issues about how we select legal, uh, counsel in our community. But, uh, what, what I can do for you in December is provide a list of firms that we have currently on retainer that might provide this skillset. And there's another firm that we used to have on retainer that we could conceivably bring back that I believe also has this skillset in their repertoire, um, and information pertaining to that. But if you want to involve yourself in.
No.
The questions being asked or the, the nature of, of, of how we would go about making that recommendation.
No.
That's a different, that's a different.
I, I'll make the motion to have you come back with a list of, uh, firms that are on the list that we have currently available that would not using one of the firms that doesn't do any of this stuff. All the lists and come back with your recommendation of two or, or five firms.
I don't think there's probably even that many.
Whatever your recommendations are, multiple recommendations, as well as the, the firm that is not currently on that you are looking for and any other firms that you may be not currently on our list and come back with a December 6, uh, council meeting. Is that wide enough latitude?
It's not, it's not enough time. So.
Yeah. And maybe, can we push it into latter part of December? I mean, or mid or latter part of December?
I'd rather do the second meeting, the latest. I like to go to the second meeting in December.
Not, not on, have special meeting on, on.
December 23rd. No.
There isn't, is there a reason?
So they don't meet until January.
What's the, what's the urgency?
Yeah.
The council, mayor pretend.
January anyway.
We're, we're getting the ball rolling.
Uh, the idea is to not let the ball roll away. So just.
Right.
But an end date.
It was supposed to come back last meeting. We're still not back on the 6.
But we now know.
Now we keep pushing.
No, it was not supposed to come back last meeting. It, it was never part of that.
I, I under, I understand the mayor protest frustration because we were never told that this is going to be on November ballot before this, that meeting that we had recently. Any event.
Oh my God. Read your minutes for, you've been told that for years. You ignored it every time.
Years.
No, you ignored it every time I said it.
No, that's not true. But we're, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking right now hiring an outside counsel.
And that is absolutely 100%.
I don't have a memory of it. Sorry.
So I don't remember that either, but it doesn't matter. What matters is the motion I have on the floor right now is to come back to the second meeting in December, uh, for a list of firms that would be available to do the work that we need to do in, on our list and outside of the list that we currently have.
Until January.
Friendly amendment.
Hold on. Okay.
Before the, before the beginning of February.
No, hold on for a second. Time out.
Make, make, let him make his motion.
If, if we come back, we discuss it, they still have to go out and they negotiate price and terms, and then they come back in January sometime, then they approve it in January. It's going to be a two to three step process. If they meet at the, what is it? Third meeting, fourth meeting on Thursday?
They have till November of 2024.
Seriously.
There is no rush.
They have until November 2024. We have, we have until June to 2024 to get it on the ballot. So let's please not, not jam up the, the city manager and the staff.
All right. First meeting in January, period. First meeting in January. That's a month and a half from now.
Any, anytime in January. I don't want it to get voted down and it makes it up to, anytime in January. Friendly amendment.
All right. I'll agree to that.
Thank you. I'll second your motion.
See, that's how I get things done, Councilmember MD. I agree to things. All right. Any other discussion on this?
Votes.
Yeah, I'll do a roll call vote. Uh, councilmember Lowenstein.
Aye.
Councilmember Horvath. Councilmember Obaji.
Aye.
Councilmember MD.
Aye.
And myself, aye as well. Thank you.
We mentioned Bruce Ellis, right?
Yeah, I already talked to them about it. We don't have to do that. And, uh, regarding Bruce Ellis, uh, closing, I'd like to have the certificate done. And if we can all sign that, I'll bring it with us here because the memorial is on the 8th of December.
Yeah, we can, we can bring, we can bring you that.
Give it to his widow.
In the first.
I will.
I'm sure.
Yeah, I already done that. All right. So can I get a motion adjourned? All right. All in favor?
Aye.